It's not scrolling now. Close it out and start it again?
Still, the computer's still thinking. What's the URL for the letter star?
Okay. All right, finally, my computer's working. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Tuesday, June 7, 2022, Board of Supervisors meeting. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Gruhalva.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz. Supervisor Heinz. Supervisor Scott.
Here.
Chair Bronson.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz. Are you with us? Supervisor Heinz. Okay, let the record show Supervisor Heinz is connected remotely. I haven't heard from him yet. All other board members are present.
All right. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to be offered today by Supervisor Christie.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, now we'll proceed to the land acknowledgement statement to be read today by Anthony Francisco Jr., and he's joining us remotely.
Good Saturday, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Well, it's good Saturday once again. I really want to thank you all for inviting me this morning. Anya Joki, Anthony Francisco Jr., and I come from the community of Comahia on the Thonothum Nation. It's an honor to be here and really to share this acknowledgement. I really do appreciate the opportunity, having that understanding that ancestral lands have extended for so far, and we've been wonderful neighbors to one another, and I'm glad that this is coming forward. So on behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homeless of the Thonothum Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Pascoyaki tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive toward building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations. Thank you so much again, and have a great and wonderful day.
Thank you so much for joining us. All right. We have, I think we still have them. We are at Pause for Paws. Are the kittens still with us?
They are still.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. My name's Monica Dangler. I'm the Director at Pima Animal Care Center. Thanks for having us here today for Pause for Paws. Today, I brought two cute little kittens, Chanel and Spartacus. These guys are available for adoption. You can learn more about them at pima.gov/adopt. If you guys don't know, right now is kitten season. We have about 500 kittens in foster, and we get about 15 to 30 kittens daily in. So we're definitely looking for fosters to help take little ones like these guys. These guys have been in foster for a few weeks, so they're ready to go. But we get those in regularly, so we can definitely use fosters or adopters for kittens. And if you can't foster or adopt, you can donate. We go through lots and lots of food for these guys, whether it's KMR for bottle babies, wet canned food, kitten kibble, heating disc, you name it. We go through lots of things. So you can also donate through Friends of PAC and their wish list for those items. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And that concludes the best part of the meeting. All right. Let's move on then to item number five on the regular agenda. Oh, wait, we have some changes to the agenda. Let me read those. On page five, item 19, option to fund open space and affordable housing. It's a correction to Canoa Ranch Campground Development. Pago project amount listed on bullet one is $0.75 million, not 75 cents. On consent calendar, page 14, item 23, that's a grant application. It's to the Arizona Department, from the Arizona Department of Health Services, and it's not for a four-year term, but rather a five-year term. So those are the changes to the agenda, and if there are no objections, the agenda will so be amended. All right, then let's move on to item five, presentation of the Dr. June Webanary Advocacy Award from Metropolitan Education Commission, presented by Dr. June Webanary and Mrs. Marybel McCorcal to the Pima County Board of Supervisors in recognition of their extraordinary work during the pandemic. Thank you both for joining us today.
Good morning. Thank you.
And I am June Webanary, and I would like to, and I am a part of the Metropolitan Education Commission's Crystal Apple Awards Committee, and I would like to introduce Dr. Mary Bell McCorcal, who is Chair of the Commission.
Well, hello there. How are you? I'm here to present an award to you. Only the award isn't here. It's a little crystal apple, and you're getting it because you're so good, all right?
Oh, there we go.
It is here, actually.
It is here. Oh, hallelujah, I'm saved. All right. My goodness, it was hiding. It says Metropolitan Education Commission, May 2022. Now, why would the Metropolitan Education Commission want to give this to you? It's because you were so good about protecting our children in all the schools in Pima County, and we appreciate that. This award is very special because it's relatively new. It's my pleasure to serve as Chair of the committee who decides who gets the Educational Advocacy Award. And so I've enjoyed that, and of course, all the past recipients of the award are like people like Richard Elias, Bob Walcott, Annie Peterson, Jaretta Douglas, and you may not know Jaretta, but she was probably the longest living school board member. She's still alive. She survived it in Flowing Wells School District. So anyway, you know what the MECC stands for. It stands for bringing all kinds of educational opportunities together in one spot so that we can communicate, we can interact, we can lobby, we can do whatever we need to do to help the kids. That's what it's all about, helping the kids. So this is called the Crystal Apple Award. It has a special name, Educational Advocacy Award. And so you're one of the few groups that has received this. So thank you for what you did, and I got all flustered because the award wasn't here, and I was going to have to make you imagine what it was like. June, is there anything else I should say?
No, I think you covered the waterfront.
The waterfront? Okay, I'll shut up, Tim. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
And here's your award. You better guard it, could disappear again.
We'll put it in a box for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on. I'm skipping item six just at the moment. I want to move on to our next presentation, proclamation, item seven. It's a presentation of proclamation to a whole bunch of people, but it's proclaiming the week of June 12 through the 18th to be Monsoon Safety Awareness Week. And let's see, I think we have Matthew McCrone, and Ken is here, and I think we have Joe Cafari. So I will move the item. Motion and a second. Any objection? Hearing non-motion carries. Supervisor Scott will make the presentation, so if we can get all of you up here. And just for the record, Supervisor Heinz is connected now. Are you connected?
Morning, sir.
Just, Matt, can you hear us? Okay, good.
Thank you, Chair Bronson. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the National Weather Service monitors severe weather and provides warnings to people within Pima County 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas the National Weather Service works in close cooperation with local media outlets to provide critical weather information as quickly as possible to protect lives and property from the hazards of severe weather, and whereas due to its location and geography, as we're all about to find out very soon, Pima County frequently experiences thunderstorm-generated wind, dust, electrical storms, and dangerous flash floods during the summer monsoon, all of which pose a considerable threat to the community, and whereas public safety during the monsoon begins with teamwork between community partners and emergency response agencies who unite to promote flood safety awareness and advance the life-saving message of turn around, don't drown, and whereas the National Weather Service works in conjunction with the Pima County Office of Emergency Management, the Pima County Regional Flood Control District, the Pima County Sheriff's Department, the Pima County Department of Environmental Quality, municipal and tribal jurisdictional partners, the American Red Cross, Tucson Electric Power Company, as well as local media partners, volunteer organizations, and other federal and state agencies to inform the community about what to do when severe weather strikes during the monsoon. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the week of June 12 through June 18, 2022, to be Monsoon Safety Awareness Week, and encourages all citizens to acquaint themselves with severe weather safety information and to use these life-saving recommendations to protect themselves and their families from the hazards that accompany the summer monsoon. Any of you gentlemen like to say a word?
Well, National Weather is predicting above-average rain for us. Is that right?
I'm going to hand this.
National Weather Service, that's what.
I'm going to hand this off to Ken. He's the one that's got all the good info for us from the National Weather Service.
Okay.
Yeah, the official outlook is for slightly favoring above-normal rainfall. So it's pretty close to equal chances of having, you know, a wet, dry, or kind of a near-normal monsoon this year. After the very wet monsoon we had last year, and of course, 2020, we had the, you know, the Big Horn Fire. Just want, I want to thank, first of all, thank the board for this proclamation. Thank Matt for arranging this proclamation to be presented today as well. And all the agencies are listed, including Pima County Office of Emergency Management, Pima County Flood Control, for all that they do during the monsoon and throughout the year to protect folks in Pima County. You know, hopefully, we do get by the next three weeks or so without having another wildfire start. Certainly, that's a possibility this time of year. We tend to get dry lightning strikes. Hopefully, we were kind of expecting, like we said, slightly favoring an above-normal rainfall for the monsoon, but really, that kind of counting on an early start, because the latter part right now doesn't look all that favorable, so hopefully, we get some of this rain in the latter part of June and into July. Probably the best chances for reaching that above-normal plateau. So thank you again.
Well, now it looks like we got some cloud build up to the east, but not coming here yet.
Expect to see those to the east of us the rest of this week. Maybe we may get, not out of the question, you get a thunderstorm around the Tucson area here later this week, perhaps Thursday.
Great. We're now going to move on to item six, e-poll demonstration. Ms. Hargrove.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Lesher. Thank you for having me this morning to actually demonstrate the electronic poll books. It's nice to actually be here with an actual poll book and a printer and not just, in theory, talk about that we actually have these items. We do actually have the poll books, and we have wanted a printer, so we've been able to test it to make sure that it works. And I just wanted to say a couple of things before we actually get into the demonstration, and just so everyone understands, I pose it as a question. What will the voter notice on Election Day? So we're all talking about the differences of the electronic poll book, the vote centers, but what will the voter actually notice on Election Day? The voter will notice that there is not this big stack of paper on the table when they walk in for the officer to actually flip through and find their name. The voter will notice that they are now, their name is being typed in, pulled up, they get to view the information on a screen, and actually sign off on it. So that's what the voter will notice on Election Day. The other thing they will notice with everything in a perfect world is that when they are checked in, the ballot is initiated, and their ballot actually prints, and they're handed that ballot from the printer. That's what they will notice. Everything else in the vote center is exactly the same as voting in a precinct. So, you know, voters I know are very concerned about what does this process look like? That's what it looks like. Not very different. The other thing I want to do is allow the board to see up close and personal one of the electronic poll books before you actually go over and get checked in. So I will have David Wisely come over and actually show you that. There is a, Jesus, can you do me a favor? Can you hold that case up? This is a case that the electronic poll books. This is a case that the electronic poll books actually live in and that they will be delivered to the vote centers prior to the election. They will go sealed, and just like ballots and anything else that we use on Election Day, those sealed numbers are verified and recorded. So this is open on Election Day, and they take out the poll books. This holds two poll books, a thermal printer, you don't have to open it, two poll books and a thermal printer. That's what this will hold. So right here, Mr. Wisely has an actual iPad, which is the electronic poll book that he will bring up and let you see, but what he's going to do, he's going to log into the actual poll book and actually print a test ballot for you. So I'm going to let Mr. Wisely step over and show you that.
Okay.
So when the poll workers start their day, they'll turn it on, and then they'll have to log into the device. Give me a second. There's a password when they log in that identifies them, and then there's a second login password to unlock the device. I'm now going to tell it to test the printer to make sure we're connected. And it's better to use the stylus because sometimes it doesn't see me. Okay. So once I verify that the printer works, we say continue, and we're ready to check in voters. There's, I can bring this forward.
You can, if you're a voter, you present me with your ID or we can do, so, okay, we will.
Oh, no.
Okay. So if you gave me that, I would have to get an additional ID because it does not have your, have your signature. But I can do a manual search for your name.
Sorry Supervisor Christie, I know you said you wanted to be the first one to actually vote. So does the board want to go over and vote or would you prefer that Mr. Wisely just bring it around and let you do this?
I'm not interested.
You're not interested in voting? Okay.
I am going to vote, but I'm not interested in logging on.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm on the early, the pebble list, so.
Oh, okay. So you get your ballot mailed to you.
A two-dimensional barcode on the ballot. You can simply scan that. And is that correct? That is correct. So, once you, I would continue. You're an eligible voter. Say two. Oh, sorry. What happens is I flip, simply flip the screen and it turns the orientation correct for you.
So I sign here?
Correct. And when you're done, you can hit done. And it flips it back to me so I can issue you a ballot.
Do I get my license, Matt?
Oh.
Thank you.
Only if you keep it honest.
That is actually a hazard on Election Day. We cheat people's driver's license a lot.
So it sounds like the printer is working?
So these are real ballots, but they're from previous elections. So we put them in our ballot box and shred them.
We're then ready to process the next voter. You would step over to the JOP to receive your ballot.
I don't see Trump's name.
No, no. We would not use 2020 ballots, no.
And then what, fill it out?
You would mark it just like you normally would and put it in the ballot box and leave.
And it's actually not correct because the, I need to update my driver's license because we moved.
So in that case, we can update it, but because the ballot was on, you have to vote through.
Okay. So I've already updated my address with the division of, with the recorder, but I also need to update the driver's license so I, in case I were gonna vote in person.
This is probably old debt.
Okay, yes it is. All right.
So it should call up your correct information.
Got it.
Okay. I think that's it. So it's, it's that simple? Is that simple? Is that quick and that easy? These printers are actually very nice. They print quicker than the ones that we were testing on earlier, so I'm very pleased with the printers. Any, any questions? Oh, sorry.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Thank you. Ms. Hargrove, I heard your interview last Friday on the Buckmaster Show, so I know you're feeling confident about the ballot-on-demand printers, which was the last piece of equipment that we were waiting to ensure that all were present for the August and November elections. Any updates since Friday on ballot-on-demand printers and what you're hearing from the vendor?
So, Madam Chair, Supervisor Scott. The vendor was here on last Friday delivering this actual printer to us and he assured us that he definitely will have those printers in his possession mid-July, oh, July, mid-June, mid-June. And all the air cards are available, so he will be able to install everything that needs to be installed and have them to us. Now, the exact date that we will have them, I am not sure, but everything else will be done by the end of June. So the only thing we would need to do is sync up the printers to the cradle points and the actual poll book devices, because if they're not synced, they won't talk to each other and we won't be able to print ballots. But training is in July. Printers will be here way before training starts. We, I am confident that we will have printers and we'll be ready to go.
So to go, so to follow up on a line of questioning that Supervisor Christie had last time you were here, you're, you're sleeping more soundly now.
I am sleeping more soundly. However, I live downtown and I live over a club, so I don't know how soundly I sleep over the weekend, but yes, I am sleeping soundly at night.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
So have we got all the eBooks, the poll books in?
Yes, sir, we have all the poll books.
And all we're waiting for is the printers?
That is correct.
And how many printers are we waiting for?
260.
260. And have you had an opportunity to check the Internet network to make, to see how it's gonna be receptive to this and any subject to breakdowns or any of that nature?
So Mr. Wisely, I'm gonna have David come back over again. I actually was able to check at some of the remote locations. The goal is to check every single vote center prior to Election Day and prior to sending everything out, but the remote locations, he can tell you how that went.
Yes, we've tested approximately 30 remote locations. Two of them had questionable signal strength, so we're going to do additional testing with that with the, with the teams I sent out, they had limited testing abilities, so we can now go to those specific sites and do more in-depth testing. Additionally, Pima County ITD is conducting their own test and they will conduct that test on all 129 locations.
So we have 129 locations?
Correct.
And where were you, where were you having signal strength issues?
One was, uh, Sopri, Old School. And I'm blanking on the name of the other location, but they were the more remote locations. We had no problem on the TO Nation or Aho and Y. Mount Lemon was fine. One location was closed.
What about Picture Rocks? That's usually a problem, signal strength.
I think that was okay, but I don't remember exactly how that was.
Okay.
Yes, and the cellular vendors with the, will also monitor the next round of testing so that they can apply instant fixes to see if that will alleviate the problems.
Yeah, the patches, okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our presentations. And we're gonna move on to call to the public. I think we, yeah. And then again, it's called to the public. And I just want to remind individuals who are wishing to participate telephonically that they must contact the clerk's office by the deadline date listed on our agenda. Each speaker needs to complete a speaker card and you are limited to three minutes. Speakers must adhere to the rules of civility and refrain from impertinent or slanderous remarks. When you are called upon to speak, please step forward to the podium and state your name for the record and direct the comments to the Board of Supervisors, not to the audience. And speakers who do not abide by these guidelines will have their comments interrupted. And with that, we'll move on to our first speaker, Gail Hartman.
Okay, now it says three. Ah, there we go. Okay, drag in. My name is Gail Hartman. I'm president of Save the Scenic Santa Rita's, a nonprofit organization that has been leading the opposition to proposed open pit mines in the Santa Rita Mountains for some time now, seems like. We want to thank you in advance for considering a resolution before you today. Once again, this would be the third, that declares your opposition to open pit mining in the Santa Ritas, addressing in particular the new activities of the company hun Bay on the western slopes of the Catalinas. It's called Copper World. As you know, the city of Tucson has also passed resolutions opposing the mine, as have other, many other groups, the Tohono O'O'atum Nation, the Pasco Yawkeys. Congressman Grijalva has endorsed us or supported our position as, and has Congresswoman Kirk Patrick, among others. I want to just emphasize a few of the reasons why we continue to be opposed to this endeavor. Number one is of course water. These mining proposals would squander billions of gallons of our precious groundwater and it is very clear that CAP water would not be a replacement. Air. As you know, Pima County has struggled for years addressing dust issues from the tailings piles that exist near Green Valley. If Copper World were to come into fruition, this would get a whole lot worse, believe me. And it certainly would not be good for the somewhat elderly populations that live nearby, especially with respiratory issues. Aesthetics. There will be enormous unsightly tailings waste piles and scarring of the nearby slopes. In fact, that's already happening. And everyone needs to understand the ridgeline of the northern Santa Ritas will come down. It will be destroyed. It will be gone forever. Our heritage. The Santa Ritas are an important part of the heritage of all of us who live here. And whether you've lived here a month or for millennia, as the Tohono O'O'atum have, we need to respect our heritage. We also know that you, the Pima County Board of Supervisors, cannot solve this issue, certainly on your own. Thus, we urge you to communicate with our members of Congress, especially Congressman Grijalva, Congresswoman Kirkpatrick, Congressman O'Halloran, and Senator Kelly perhaps, because that's where the power lies in this case. There's lots of issues before you right now and to some, this may not seem as critical as many, but I think the real concern here is the damage will be there forever. And our grandchildren and great-grandchildren are gonna say, if this happens, you know, how could you let this happen? Not you personally, believe me, but how could we let this happen? And I think we just have to do everything we can to prevent that from happening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stu Williams.
Madam Chair, Honorable Board of Supervisors. Stu Williams, Executive Director, Save the Scenic Santa Ritas. We want to thank you for your consideration today of this ordinance, excuse me, of this resolution and thank you Supervisor Grijalva for forwarding this. We just, to ride on Gail's comments, I have for your consideration and review later a copy of the letter from Congressman Grijalva to the Army Corps of Engineers from May 24th requesting action by the Army Corps. And there is also accompanying the letter, a photograph of, an aerial photograph of damage that has, that has been occurring in the Copper World area with, without proper permitting, we believe. The photograph, the photograph date is the end of April of this particular site showing substantial dredge and fill work and ephemeral wash that drains to the Santa Cruz River, which we, which are considered to be, of course, waters of the United States. So thanks again for considering the, this resolution today and we very much appreciate your support. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Bruno?
My name is Tony Bruno. I live at 28250 West Foxwood Way, Elephant Head, Arizona, otherwise known as Amato. Chairman Bronson, Board of Supervisors. I want to thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak today. I'm here speaking in favor of the Amato Youth Center and the partnership that has been created. I actually consider it a perfect partnership between federal government, state government, and county government in order to build a youth center for local youth. Those of you who have not been to Amato, I actually grew up there. I live in the same house I've lived in for 58 years. And there is nothing to do for children right now in Amato. We live along the I-19 drug corridor. There is no Pop Warner football. There is no 4H. There is no soccer. And with rising gas prices, we don't even have a gas station. The nearest gas station is 22 miles away. When parents work, children are left alone. And the Amato Youth Center picks up that slack and works with the Sopri School District. The only thing I would add to thanking you for all your support is they are going to be running cable down I-19 for Internet. You just heard that Sopri has very power, not enough power to operate. We definitely want a Dropbox and we want that Internet in for our youth so that they can attend school if there is ever another issue where they can't get to school. We learned firsthand that Internet is desperately needed in our community. We cannot even operate the youth center with the five employees we have based on the Internet capability we have. So I'm taking this opportunity to hit two birds with one stone, but thank you, thank you for supporting the youth center and helping us to build that youth center. CDBG money is being used and as some of you know, I've hit that pocket many times in many different ways. And I just want to thank you again for all you do within the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Bass?
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair and Pima County Board of Supervisors. Again, I'm following more of what Tony presented to you and my name is Amy Bass. I'm the Executive Director of Prevention at Portable Practical Educational Preparation, Pep Inc. And we are the agency behind the Amato Youth Center. I just want to thank you very much because the area that we serve is often forgotten as a far-flung rural community. And Tony spoke to the needs that are down there. We see this firsthand with these children. Oftentimes, these children in their behaviors get judged by outsiders that don't understand the risks, the challenges, the heartache that these kids deal with. It is an area of extreme poverty. There are very few resources and we do our best. Since 2011, we have been providing services through the Amato Youth Center, which was a leased building ruined by a flood in 2018. So we have been diligently fundraising to the best of our ability. You may have heard of the Amato Chili Cook-Off, so thank you very much for supporting us in that. We've been reaching out to all of our donors and supporters and writing grants and we are so close now to being able to construct this youth center. And Supervisor Bronson has been down there personally to see what we're doing and encouraging us and supporting us and saying. Firearm-related violence disproportionately threatens minority populations within Pima County. Firearm-related violence represents both a staggering human and economic cost to Pima County. In 2020, 437 persons had 541 hospital and emergency visits for firearm-related injuries. Build hospitalization costs for those injuries totaled over $28 million. Seventy-two percent of those costs were defrayed by public funds. In 2010, the Centers for Disease Control estimated that medical and work loss costs for firearm-related violence in Arizona averaged over $1 million per victim. Other significant firearm-related violence costs not accounted for include emergency response, law enforcement, criminal justice, incarceration, and quality of life. Given the growing threat posed by firearm-related violence to the health and safety of Pima County, I support all efforts to prevent violent behaviors, including universal background checks, severe threat orders of protection, the closing of domestic violence loopholes, and aggressive enforcement of straw purchase and prohibited possessor firearm laws. In the meantime, what can we do here in Pima County to reduce the level of firearm violence? Here are some suggestions. Establish and provide general fund support to an injury prevention office within the Pima County Health Department to oversee and coordinate mental health, overdose prevention, suicide prevention, and firearm violence prevention activities. This office's firearm violence prevention activities should include FFL dealer enhanced safety training aimed at assisting the staff of gun dealers in better identifying straw purchasers, mental health warning signs, suicide prevention, customers under the influence of alcohol or drugs, and how to identify ammunition and magazine purchases likely trafficked in Mexico. Create and make available to the public YouTube videos on how and what to expect when purchasing a firearm in Arizona. Utilize local libraries in high-risk areas as venues to present firearm safety and legal information to the public. The safety portion taught by law enforcement and a law and legal portion taught by the Pima County Attorney's Office. Within 10 days of event necessitating initial intervention, excuse me, I want to say a little bit more. Advise trauma victims about available safety and legal education provided by Pima County. Potential benefits: Enhanced communication between local FFL dealers with one another, law enforcement, and the public across Pima County on issues related to protecting public safety. Enhanced training of FFL personnel and the public can potentially reduce the number of successful straw purchases, firearms ammunition magazines of firearms that are trafficked to Mexico or California. Provision of accurate and timely firearm safety and legal education to better inform at-risk persons and communities. I'll finish now. Please consider these recommendations as initial steps in protecting ourselves, our children, and our grandchildren from the growing threat of firearm violence. These measures are all within your legal and financial authority to implement. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Bowman.
And again, three minutes, please.
Good morning, Chair Bronson and members of the board. My name is Nancy Bowman. I live at 2931 East Cayecine Picado, Tucson, Arizona. I just have a brief statement to make. I'm here to ask you to please stop using crossing your fingers and thoughts and prayers as a solution to our gun violence epidemic in this community. It is not only here, it's all over the country. We have a mass murder now every single day, and the time to address this is long gone, but we need to start looking at it immediately. So I would ask you to please implement any safety measures that you may be able to implement in this county to keep our people safe. As you know, your job is, your job description, your mission is to promote health and safety in this community, and if you can't do your job, then perhaps you should step down. I know that, I fully understand that you are, your hands are tied by state laws that are funded and influenced by the gun lobby, but to operate in your job under a system that does not allow you to do your job is ludicrous. So I would ask you to please do what you can to protect this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Stambaugh.
Hello.
Good morning.
I'm a resident of Morana, and I'm looking at the Community Bond Program update, and I realize that this was approved in December 2020. Since that time, crime has risen, and the nonviolent crime has risen significantly. I live in an area where people's cars are broken into all the time. You have breaking and entering, and they're all nonviolent, but they're occurring on a rapid basis. And what I'm asking is that you reconsider, given the fact that with the economy that is getting harder for people to be able to have enough money to buy the things that they need, people are going to start doing more thefts. And the message that you're sending by doing what looks like a catch-and-release is going to send a message to people that, hey, you can go ahead and rob your neighbor, and you're going to get away with it. We're going to let you out of jail, and, you know, hopefully a judge will not prosecute you, or maybe they will prosecute you, but you're sending the wrong message. It's like raising your kids. If they do something wrong, you don't not discipline them. You have to discipline them. And this program here is going to invite more crime. That's it.
Thank you. Drew Heaton. You're dressed Hawaiian-style.
Always. Thank you. For the record, Drew Heaton, esteemed Board of Supervisors, what can be said in three minutes to soften hearts and minds? I don't know, but I continue to try. On Martin Luther King Day 2017, I stood right here and said, "We are on the cusp of a revolution once again for health and human rights." Don't miss it, I cautioned. That was after months and thousands of hours and thousands of calls and emails constituents warning of Monsanto's health and human rights violations. Most of you present here today weren't there, so I'll remind you. We were right. We were right now. The evidence flooding your inbox is good enough. A Democrat whistleblower friend of mine said, "If someone had asked her 12 years ago if the CDC manipulated and falsified data, she would have never believed it until she experienced it herself." Why is respected Democrat RFK Junior, who has championed the case of the poor and working class against environmental exploitation, censored on this issue? Why is respected liberal Democrat Naomi Wolf's concerns on long-term safety silenced? I appreciate your consideration to allow discussion of this agenda item, but because of the intergovernmental agreement which ties money to this county based on CDC compliance, unless your hearts and minds are softened to allow a paradigm shift, all I can expect is to remove plausible deniability. You cannot say you didn't know. I know, because of after 30 years of watching the vaccine issue and eight years speaking out for informed medical consent, I had hoped that Doctors Hines, Grijalva, and Cullen would have advised you in 2020 that outbreaks of 100% vaccinated populations have always happened, that never in the history of medicine have asymptomatic people been diagnosed as a clinical case of anything. In April 2020, diagnoses changed with a bias towards COVID-19, which is why my friend who died in a car accident was able to be labeled a COVID death. Prior to April of 2020, that would have been considered medical fraud. I submit, it is still medical fraud. Mussolini, a fascist, defined fascism as a merger between corporation and state, aka government. If you believe that basic human liberties such as voting or even oversight in voting are predicated on the consumption of a product from a giant pharmaceutical company, by definition, those people are fascists. I don't believe this is actually what you want, and so respectfully plead with you. The reason why last time in this meeting, I pled with you and I assured with you, my private, my private health data is that I want you to see these people as human beings just like you.
Thank you. Dan. Dan Juan. Dan Juan.
Good morning, Dan Juan. I would like to speak first to Agenda Item 15, excuse me, Joint Task Force to Address Poverty. This item requests a task force to be formed to address poverty in Pima County using a multi-justicial, multi-sector approach to tackle the related issues of preventing poverty in our community, addressing historical inequities, removing barriers to economic self-sufficiency, aiding the transition of Pima County families and individuals out of poverty and toward economic self-sufficiency. And the fourth and last is addressing the structures and systems in our community that perpetuate poverty. These four approaches are very subjective, poorly defined, and creates one more committee that is a repeat of historic initiatives that have failed. It does not address the actions of Pima County or even the cities upon the community. This item will increase poverty. Now for Addendum Item Three, Small Business Commission COVID-19 Pandemic Response Task Force. This item addresses the Small Business Commission recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Their recommendation, which outlines the formation of a task force to conduct an after-action analysis of impacts of the actions taken by this board during the COVID-19 pandemic, both positive and negative, on the Pima County small business community. I strongly believe that the policies of this board have created the largest transfer of wealth from the middle class and poor to the wealthy in the history of Pima County, and there is so much more that has happened with this. I strongly believe that the policies of this board have created the largest transfer, excuse me. This board's action and impacts upon this community need to be brought to light. First, I recommend that a full, external, independent audit of all actions of this board and Health Department be performed to collect objective data, objective data, on its impact upon Pima County. The results of this audit should be presented publicly to the board. With this in hand, then proceed to Addendum Three's recommendation to form a task force that can review the objective data and make their recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Norquist.
All right. Good morning, members of the board. Administrator Lesher, my name is Peter Norquist, for the record. In light of the fact that the issue of election worker vaccination status is going to be reexamined today, for which I thank you, and that it has been proposed first that unvaccinated individuals be required to submit proof of a negative COVID test, and also that vaccinated individuals be awarded a $50 stipend, I wish to bring to your attention the fact that proof is lacking in the peer-reviewed medical literature. The vaccination correlates with decreased spread of COVID, and in fact, that the opposite trend may sometimes be observed. As I have limited time, I wish to quote from one recent representative article. The title of the article is "Increases in COVID-19 Are Unrelated to Levels of Vaccination Across 68 Countries and 2,947 Counties in the United States," in the European Journal of Epidemiology. "At the country level, there appears to be no discernible relationship between percentage of population fully vaccinated and new COVID-19 cases. In fact, the trend line suggests a marginally positive association such that countries with higher percentage of population fully vaccinated have higher COVID-19 cases per 1 million people. Notably, Israel, with over 60% of their population fully vaccinated, had the highest COVID-19 cases per 1 million people. The lack of a meaningful association between percentage population fully vaccinated and new COVID-19 cases is further exemplified, for instance, by comparison of Iceland and Portugal. Both countries have over 75% of their population fully vaccinated and have more COVID-19 cases per 1 million people than countries such as Vietnam and South Africa that have around 10% of their population fully vaccinated. The solvency on vaccination as a primary strategy to mitigate COVID-19 and its adverse consequences needs to be reexamined. For instance, in a report released from the Ministry of Health in Israel, the effectiveness of two doses of the Pfizer-BioNTech vaccine against preventing COVID-19 infection was reported to be 39%, substantially lower than the trial efficacy of 96%, curiously. It is also emerging that immunity derived from the Pfizer-BioNTech vaccine may not be as strong as immunity acquired through recovery from the COVID-19 virus. A substantial decline in immunity from an mRNA vaccine 16 months post-immunization has also been reported. The upshot is that there does not appear to be any empirical motivation for requiring proof of vaccination and negative tests only of the unvaccinated, nor for awarding the vaccinated with a $50 stipend. Common sense would dictate that no favoritism be shown to either population, as the lack of negative correlation between vaccination and COVID cases would make the criteria for both test results and stipends appear to be politically rather than epidemiologically motivated. However, should that stipend money be burning a hole in your pockets, I would suggest, based on the above study, and I will conclude, and others similar, that a wiser use of the proposed stipend to be awarded to those unvaccinated individuals who can claim natural immunity as they objectively pose the least threat to the community at large. Thank you, and I appreciate the extra time.
Robert Bruce. Robert.
Since I'm about to initiate the process of putting a Jeffersonian party on the ballot here in Pima County, I'm just going to do some ramblings on partisanship in one-party government. I mean, we have one-party government here in Pima County. I'm counting, well, four out of five here, and seven out of seven on the Tucson City Council are all of one party, which leaves absolutely no checks and balances of any kind. One-party government is always bad. I grew up in Chicago. The day I was born, the city had the peak population. It had the peak of prosperity, and it had the finest public school system the world had ever seen. And by the time I left the city 20 years later, everything had declined. Population had dropped by a quarter million people. Prosperity was gone. The school system was a wreck, or close, on its way to being a wreck. And all of this I watched in real time with my politically aware mother and uncle giving me a narration, step by step, as I watched the once-great city crumble. Mexico, on the day I became the resident gringo in Pascuero Michoacan, there was no hunger. 12 pesos to the dollar for the previous 12 years. No inflation, no devaluation, and it was the most peaceful place in the world. I was... results and stipends appear to be politically rather than epidemiologically motivated. However, should that stipend money be burning a hole in your pockets, I would suggest, based on the above study, and I will conclude, and others similar, that a wiser use of the proposed stipend to be awarded to those unvaccinated individuals who can claim natural immunity as they objectively pose the least threat to the community at large. Thank you, and I appreciate the extra time.
Robert Bruce. Robert?
Since I'm about to initiate the process of putting a Jeffersonian party on the ballot here in Pima County, I'm just going to do some ramblings on partisanship in one-party government. I mean, we have one-party government here in Pima County. I'm counting, well, four out of five here, and seven out of seven on the Tucson City Council are all of one party, which leaves absolutely no checks and balances of any kind. One-party government is always bad. I grew up in Chicago. The day I was born, the city had the peak population, it had the peak of prosperity, and it had the finest public school system the world had ever seen. And by the time I left the city 20 years later, everything had declined, population had dropped by a quarter million people, prosperity was gone, the school system was a wreck, or close, on its way to being a wreck. And all of this I watched in real time with my politically aware mother and uncle giving me a narration, step by step, as I watched the once great city crumble. Mexico, on the day I became the resident gringo in Pascuero Michoacan, there was no hunger. 12 pesos to the dollar for the previous 12 years, no inflation, no devaluation, and it was the most peaceful place in the world. I was infinitely safe, or rambling around the backwoods of Mexico than I was in my home city of Chicago in the 70s. And it was one-party pre-government that did it, embezzling all of the country's resources and instituting repression, Stalinist repression, and, I mean, I know, I was imprisoned for four months for three marijuana seeds with 500 political prisoners, 500 traficantes, and 500 criminals. So I know a little bit about Stalinism and repression in Mexico. One-party government is always bad, and what we have is one-party government, with your exception, sir. And I appreciate your attention to financial responsibility. I don't appreciate your devotion to your king. In any case, I will be going through the motions of putting a Jeffersonian party on the ballot, because one-party government doesn't work is just going to be trouble down the line. We already see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Ariza.
May I speak when you call? Item 13, please.
Well, that's, it's not a public hearing. This is the time to speak now.
Okay, very good.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. I put my name in to speak in response to the comments that would be brought forward. So I'm not really sure what I'm responding to in advance of hearing that. So if you'll excuse me. But I understand that the Merit Commission, and Mr. Helen is here, he's the chairperson of the Merit Commission, presented a letter stating that the Merit Commission wishes to select its own attorney instead of having the process go through procurement. Mr. Helen's point, as I understand it, is that the Commission wants to select its own attorney, and it wants its wishes considered. And I spent some time, after I saw that letter, taking a look at your procurement code. And as part of participation in that request for solicitation, it's very clear that the evaluation process, which my firm was awarded that contract, 30% of the evaluation is references. So I suggest that the Merit Commission's desires were reflected as part of that evaluation process to the extent of 30% of the selection process criteria. The procurement process, of course, is designed to protect the public money, and it's your procurement code. It's put in place for a reason. My firm was one of three that submitted a proposal in response to that solicitation. My firm was awarded the contract. Neither of the other two firms submitted a protest. And only bidders and prospective bidders are allowed, under your procurement code, to submit protests. So my firm was awarded the contract. There were no protests. The Merit Commission's desires were considered as part of that evaluation process in that 30% regarding references. So I am here to answer any questions, and I wanted to respond to that. And I just, my firm would like to keep that contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly McCaslin.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, Staff, Community. My name is Molly McCaslin. Come to you this morning as a member of Citizens for a Safer Pima County, to urge you to stem the growing gun violence and domestic terrorism that threatens to undermine our open and free society. We all know that gun violence in Pima County and all across the United States has to be addressed immediately. We all know the courage that you all took, this board, against the pandemic, all that you did. I'm here to say, we need that same courage to stop an epidemic of gun violence all around us. When I first came before you lobbying for universal background checks at the Pima County Fairgrounds Gun Show, it was in the aftermath of Sandy Hook massacre. At that time, there was no state law prohibiting such regulation, yet only one supervisor, Richard Elias, Supervisor Elias, understood the urgency of this important message. Since then, Pima County has facilitated the sale of thousands of assault weapons without background checks at the Pima County Fairgrounds. Now, we understand that now the board is held hostage by the state that favors the right to own an AR-15 over the right to free, to be free, to live free of domestic terrorism. Still, we believe that with ever-growing horrendous epidemic violence, all elected officials from the ground up have a sworn responsibility to do everything possible to protect the public. With that responsibility in mind, we urge you to immediately consider the following actions. One, direct the Pima County Attorney to do everything in her power to combat the sale of illegal gun purchases, especially on Pima County property, and to swiftly prosecute all straw purchases in the county. Two, aggressively lobby state and federal government to support universal background checks, red flag laws, and immediate ban on all assault weapons of war, as well as all high-capacity magazines. Three, allocate funding for the Pima County Health Department. And that's been laid out in Mike's comments. And Mike and Nancy and I are all here as part of Citizens for a Safer Pima County. And I'm sorry we're here. I'm glad to see you all doing good things, but I grieve for our city, our county, our country. Our message to you is very simple, you all. Stop taking sides. Stop taking sides and have the courage to take action. Do everything you can to protect our lives and our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Helen.
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Mike Helen. I chair the Pima County Merit Commission, and on behalf of the Commission, I respectfully request that you allow us to select our own legal counsel. We are the client. The Commission is unanimous in its belief that the process by which our current attorney was selected presents an unacceptable conflict of interest, prejudicial to the interests of every employee who comes before the Commission. Each employee who appeals a discipline before the Commission is entitled to expect a fair and impartial hearing on the issues presented. As I stand before you today, that expectation has been seriously compromised. The procurement department appointed a panel to review proposals for the contract in question. I was a member of that panel, as was Jason Parrish, the deputy director of the Human Resources Department. During the evaluation, I pointed out evidence of inadequate legal representation provided by the lawyer in question to a prior client. Neither Mr. Parrish nor the other member of the panel even bothered to discuss those concerns. Instead, they awarded the contract to whom I believe, and the members of the Commission believe, was the least competent attorney available. The conflict of interest to which I referred is the fact that in every appeal before the Commission, human resources is a co-responder, hostile by definition to the interests of the employee. The Commission has now held six hearings involving employees who are terminated for not being vaccinated. Jason Parrish, the deputy director of Human Resources, the same Jason Parrish who casted a deciding vote to impose on the Commission, a lawyer the Commission does not want, was the lead witness for the county in every single hearing. In some cases, he was the only witness. And in two cases, he was the official department representative for the sheriff. In those two cases, sitting three weeks' seats away on the county attorney's side of the room was our lawyer. How could anyone believe that this is an appropriate setting? In my opening statement at the beginning of each hearing, I now feel compelled to include a paragraph citing HR's role in this lawyer's selection, pointing out the conflict of interest, and assuring the appellant that the Commission will not allow that conflict to prejudice the appellant's interests in any way. The Commission unanimously supports me in that statement. The hearings have revealed some very troubling improprieties in the way your employees have been treated. Due process has been seriously violated. Employees' rights were trampled on. One employee was denied a reasonable accommodation in a manner which one can only conclude was inexcusably inept or maliciously purposeful. She got her job back with full-back pay. The Commission's interpretation of the advice of our counsel, however, was that none of that should have mattered. Lack of due process, no problem. Mischaracterization of the accommodation requested by the employee, no problem. Helping one employee and not helping another employee, not a problem. What we heard was straight out of HR's playbook, that we had no right to even hear the cases. The Commission unanimously rejected that notion and proceeded to hear the appeals on their merits, and we will continue to do so. Notwithstanding all this, the Commissioners have tried to deal with it professionally. Prior to the first hearing, one of the Commissioners remarked, "I don't know, maybe it will turn out that we like her." After several hearings, however, it has become abundantly clear that the Commissioners do not trust or value her advice and do not like her manner. The unfortunate fact is that in the minds of the five members of the Pima County Merit Commission, we are currently without counsel, and we ask you to help us rectify it.
Thank you, Mr. Helen. All right, that concludes call to the public. We now move on.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. Mr. Humphrey made some proposals that he wishes the county, specifically the Health Department, to undertake. I'd like, by way of direction, to ask Ms. Lesher to respond to the board as to whether or not any of his proposals can be undertaken by the Health Department.
And Mr. Humphrey, could you submit for the record, I think you had your statements written, I don't know if you're still with us. Okay. If you would submit them to the clerk, that would be appreciated. Oh, okay. All right. Now, we have no executive session items, so we're going to move to Board of Supervisors sitting as other boards, Flood Control District Board, Items Nine and Ten. If nobody wishes to divide the question, I'll move those items.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. Moving on to Board of Supervisors, sitting as the Library District Board, Item Number 11. I'll move that item.
Sir.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. It's 10:20 approximately. Do you want to take a short break now? Okay, we'll, we'll take a short break and then reconvene our regular meeting in about 10 minutes. Okay, we'll take a short break and then reconvene our regular meeting in about 10 minutes. Thank you. We can continue with the meeting? Right, we're going to resume our regular meeting now. I'm going to take some things out of order quickly. Moving to item 31 under Development Services. We have people here joining us who are having to leave shortly. This is a hearing to specific plan rezoning. P-21, S-P-00002, Branton et al., North Reservation Road, specific plan. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address us in opposition to this item at this time? Again, we're on item 31. It's a hearing, specific plan rezoning. If there's no one in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition, I am going to move to approve the -- approve subject to -- to close the hearing and approve subject to standard and special conditions as recommended by staff and the commission.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. I'm going to quickly then do items 32 -- these are hearings, 32 through 35. They're hearings of rezoning ordinance number 2022-12 and item 32. Item 33 is ordinance number 2022-13. It's a rezoning ordinance. Item 34 is a rezoning ordinance, ordinance number 2022-14. And item 35 is a hearing, rezoning ordinance number 2022-15. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to these items at this time? If not, again, I've moved closed public hearing and approve items 32, 33, 34, and 35 and ordinance number 2022-12, 13, 14, and 15.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. All right. Moving back to the regular agenda in regular order. Board of Supervisors, sitting as a Board of Supervisors, approval, item 12 is approval of the consent calendar. What's the pleasure of the board on this item?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I'd like to poll consent calendar items, numbers two through six, nine, 21, 22, and 27.
Nine, 21, 22, and 27. One, two, 27. All right, I'll move the remainder of consent in its entirety.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. Moving on to item two, Morana Public School District. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Supervisor Christie.
Madam Chair, could you amend your motion and perhaps for expediency's sake include that we consider two, three, four, five, and six? I'm doing this basically as an opportunity to vote against them.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to include items two, three, four, five, and six. Amen to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
As I said, I'm pulling these so I can vote no. I do not feel, and I have stated that position for many months now, that it is the responsibility of Pima County taxpayers to be paying for pre-kindergarten programs for a select few and have the bill being paid by everyone, even though they don't have any participation in it. So I will be voting on -- voting no on items two, three, four, five, and six.
Are there any other no votes? If not, motion carries four to one. Moving on to item nine, City of Tucson, IGA Consortium of the Federal Home Program for federal fiscal year 2023 through 25. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yeah, I think item number nine and item number 21 are joined together. So when we get to item 22 -- or, excuse me, 21, we can relate it back to item nine and vice versa, or they could be considered at the same time, whatever the...
Okay, what I'll do then is amend my motion to include items nine and 21 for approval. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Supervisor Christie.
Yes, but thank you, Madam Chair. These seem to be doing with -- dealing with affordable housing, and I'm just curious, if you look at the background, that the -- there's been a commission or an intergovernmental cooperative agreement between Pima County and the City of Tucson to establish U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development home investment partnerships and a partnership consortium basically dealing with Pima County and the City of Tucson. I find it startling that this has been in effect since 1992, and it comes to light even more importantly because, as we'll see later in the agenda and in other discussions, there is a recent interest in affordable -- excuse me, in affordable housing by Pima I would like to see that staff provide a report of all the completed units that Pima County has been involved with in the area of affordable housing, and also an evaluation by staff as to the extent of Pima County involvement in this. And the metrics, we don't have, but in the background again, it says the number of completed units as identified in the current city-county HUD five-year consolidated plan and HUD consolidated annual performance evaluation before. All of this has been existing, and then on top of that, we are going to be dealing with a push to spend $5 million on affordable housing. I would ask, at very least, that we continue this until we get a firmer idea of what the extent of Pima County has been in as far as providing or being involved in affordable housing. Is it right for Pima County to be involved with affordable housing? Should it be left to private sector involvement rather than the county providing affordable housing? I just don't see enough data here to go along with the approval of these grants unless we have significantly more information. As for number 21, the same applies on this particular issue. Program goals and predicted outcomes. We don't have that information, and I would ask that staff give more elaborate and detailed information to the board as to what the role has been and is currently as far as affordable housing. Again, in particular, because if this has been in place, and Pima County has been involved in affordable housing since 1992, why are we pushing for an additional $5 million in affordable housing? So I would ask that this be continued, Madam Chair.
Is there any further discussion? My motion was to approve. I understand your concern, Supervisor Christie. I'm still going to vote in favor of approving, but I think that the questions you raise, if we could get staff to respond, I think those are legitimate questions, but I intend to support this.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott.
Just to go to the language of the intergovernmental agreement, if you look under recitals, items C and D, this refers to the city and the county working in partnership through which federal funds are made available to state and local governments for the acquisition, rehabilitation, and new construction of affordable housing and tenant-based rental assistance. Going down to D, the act allows units of general local government to join together to form a consortium for the purpose of receiving a home allocation from the federal government and for administering the home program as a single participating jurisdiction. So that's the partnership that we've been engaged in since 1992, working jointly with the city to expend those federal funds.
Madam Chair, again, I would ask, perhaps Supervisor Scott has the answer, how many affordable housing units have been completed and constructed since 1992 with this consortium?
No, I think that's an excellent question, but I was citing the purpose for the consortium, which is to make use of federal funds that are made available to local governments and the desire of the city and the county to participate jointly to avoid duplication of efforts.
Any further discussion? There's a motion on the floor for approval. Any objections?
I object.
One objection from Supervisor Christie. Hearing non. Further objections? Motion carries four to one. Moving on to item 22, Emergency Food and Shelter Program. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Supervisor Christie, you asked this item be pulled.
I -- thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have questions because the item says, "Emergency Food and Shelter Program to provide for the humanitarian relief for individuals at imminent risk of homelessness." Yet this is a program, I would assume, that is to shelter the homeless, but if they're imminent at risk, then they're not homeless. So my question is, if -- those are two different categories. Individuals at imminent risk of homelessness, and then homelessness of these individuals themselves. So my question is, what are we covering? Those who are in imminent risk? And what does that mean? And what does this do to accommodate them? And secondly, if it's not for imminent risk, is it for just homelessness? And if it's just for homelessness, what makes this eviction program different from the already existent eviction homeless programs that we've been passing here right and left? Why, when we do have all of these homeless eviction programs available and have been utilized with taxpayer funds, why are we doing this one and not even delegating a difference between imminent homelessness and homelessness itself?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, this is the program, and I know that Dan Sullivan is here, who's the director of the program, and may be able to provide some additional information, or Mr. Flag. But we have, as we've commented in the past, we have been leasing hotel facilities for two reasons that we -- for which we have received federal funding and assistance, and a portion of that is for those who are facing evictions, and this is a continuation of the same programs we've been discussing for a period of time. If you'd like a little more granularity on that, I believe, I'm sure either Mr. Sullivan or Mr. Flag would be happy to provide such.
Well, Madam Chair, thank you, Administrator Lesher. I appreciate that. But going back to the background on item 22, and as of today, our records indicate that the LRC, LRC being what?
Let me -- again, if I could ask Mr. Sullivan or Mr. Flag to please provide the granularity on this with all of the different questions you may have.
Chair Bronson, members of the board. To the question of imminent risk, HUD defines imminent risk as being within 15 days of homelessness, so there are different categories of homelessness. The first being literally homeless, so living on the street. So the program that we have over at the hotel is to ensure people, you know, don't wind up on the street, so even though they're in a hotel, they're in a shelter situation, they're still considered at imminent risk by the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
May I ask a question, Madam Chair? What is the difference between the migrants that we are sheltering and the homeless that we are sheltering?
Well, the difference, Chair Bronson, members of the board, the people that we're serving at the shelter run by Community Workforce Development have been referred by our Eels Program, the Office of Emergency Eviction Legal Services. We're working with the constable's office to ensure that people don't wind up on the street and then have a pathway into permanent housing. Those who are served in the other program are asylum seekers who have been referred by Border Patrol, as I believe.
Madam Chair, but don't we have emergency food and shelter programs already in place for homeless and migrants?
for homeless and migrants that we've been expending here? What is the category, the definition of the recipients of this grant? Are they migrants? Are they migrant homeless?
Chair Bronson, members of the board, Supervisor Christie, they are for people who are at imminent risk of experiencing homelessness. So people in our community who are facing eviction, that we are trying to prevent from having to live in their car or on the streets or in a congregate emergency shelter.
And these are both at the Red Roof Inn and the Comfort Inn Suites?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, you know, I would need to double-check on that to see if there is, the program's going to be serving both, so if I can get back to you on that, but...
And where is the shelter for this program?
So Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, for those who are at imminent risk, it's at the Days Inn over a little bit north of the Tucson Airport.
Days Inn?
Oh, excuse me. I always get that mixed up. The Comfort Suites.
The Comfort Suites and the Red Roof Inn are being utilized for the various categories of migrants, homeless, COVID-decade, COVID-positive families at risk, imminent risk. Those are the two issues?
Right now, those who are seeking asylum are at the Red Roof Inn and a little bit of overflow at the Days Inn. Comfort Suites, sorry, I keep doing that. And our program is exclusively at the Comfort Suites.
And are we sharing these benefits with asylum seekers, with or without COVID?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, as far as I believe, yes.
So it's kind of interesting, since we're not segregating the populations, how are we segregating the money given?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, the Pima County Grants Management and Innovation Department does an excellent job of tracking. So we are using data systems so that we know which population is in what room. Specifically for those who are at risk of homelessness, we utilize the Homeless Management Information System, which is a HUD program designed to track folks. So we know, you know, which program is, which federal funding source is paying for which population. For example, with the, those who are experiencing homelessness or at risk of experiencing homelessness, we can either use federal funds from the stimulus, or we could also use our Emergency Solutions Grants, which is a grant from Housing and Urban Development.
So we have like a pool of homelessness eviction monies that depending on whatever we classify these groups, we can pick into that pool of money and designate it? Who makes the decision?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, so it really depends on HUD's definition. So for example, with emergency solutions grants from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, for permanent housing defined as, you know, rapid rehousing, people have to be category one, so living on the streets or emergency shelter. For homelessness prevention, you know, they just need to be within 15 days and don't have a permanent place to go to. So it really is dependent on the category of homelessness as defined by HUD.
And Madam Chair, where does the COVID-positive and negative population come into this?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, so throughout the course of the project, you know, people have become sick and they isolate within the program at either location, be they, you know, in our program or the program overseen by the Health Department.
Well, we did get a running tally of some of the expenses on this particular item. I believe it was $580,000 and then another $290,000. That should be added to the already, what is it, $12,000, excuse me, $12 million that have been accrued thus far in this entire category of various homeless, COVID migrant situations. So this, these two amounts should be added to that, so it's probably closer up to the $13 million now.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, that's probably correct. You know, the majority of our programs at Community and Workforce Development have been to prevent homelessness and to prevent evictions and to make landlords whole. So we've received a significant amount of federal stimulus money to ensure that people stay housed. And if not, we have put this program together just to ensure that the people don't become street homeless or wind up living in a shelter, congregate shelter.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any further discussion?
Thank you too, by the way.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? Any objections?
I object.
One objection, Supervisor Christie. If there are no further objections, motion carries four to one. Moving on to item 27, Acceptance Justice Services, I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Supervisor Christie.
I don't believe I, no, I get pardon, Madam Chair, I made a mistake. I initially wanted to pull it, but at this point, I do not, so...
Okay, the item's been moved, any discussion? There's no discussion, any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to Board of Supervisors, sitting as the board, we've just been through the approval of the consent calendar. We now move to item 13, Merit System Commission on Law Enforcement, Merit System Counsel, Attorney, Supervisor Grijalva, you put this item on?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bronson. So this, the Merit Commission sent us a letter with their concerns regarding the hiring of an attorney. Initially, this was a request to allow the Merit System Commission to be able to hire their own attorney immediately, but we understand from the communications from legal that the contract is through February 8, 2023. And so I'm not sure if we can make the modification in this item, but basically it would be to, for the interview process, to make sure that they include more than one member of the commission and that, I mean, or the entire commission, and let them go through the process of the procuring of an attorney. The procurement process needs to happen because it has to go through county procurement. I mean, that's just factual, so you can't just go out and hire. But I do think that there should be more members of the Merit Commission in the interview process. And that's not to say that the attorney isn't qualified, but I do think it makes sense for the Merit Commission to have more representation during that interview process.
Ms. Lesher, since this has already, I mean, the contract has been signed and it's in effect until 2023, I don't think that we can change the process now, but perhaps in the future, we could do as Supervisor Grijalva suggested. Do you have a response?
Chair Bronson, that is my understanding, that the commission at this point, inconsistent with Supervisor Grijalva's request, is not to alter the current contract, but to revise the process when the contract becomes renewed at the end of the first year or in February of next year. And that we review, what I understand, the request at this point is to review the process, the procurement process, to ensure broader representation of the Merit Commission on that procurement, on the selection committee.
Of the selection of the attorney, I think that makes sense.
All right. So that's by way of direction, I guess?
Yeah, I don't think we have to vote, and I don't, I'm not suggesting changing the current contract, because I know that that would be an issue for Pima County. But I do think that when the review, it's a contract that can be renewed annually for up to X number of years. So I just think that, you know, the Merit Commission and HR have an opportunity to review, put out for another bid if they want to do that, and look to see who applies.
And if I may, Chair Bronson, if I could get just clarity, that is, I am understanding that the procurement, that the committee, the selection committee, would include additional members of the Merit Commission, but not that the selection committee would be exclusively members of the Merit Commission?
No, no, I was just, I just think that there should be more representation of the Merit Commission members.
Thank you.
All right. That was by way of direction, so then let's move on to item 14.
Madam Chair, just for clarity, what is, could we have another iteration of what it is we're giving direction of?
So my understanding is the interview process had one member of the Merit Commission and two other additional people. So there wasn't a majority or even a 50-50 representation from the Merit Commission. So I'd like to see 50-50, and we don't necessarily have to have a full quorum, so you could do two and two, so it's a committee of four. I think that makes sense.
You really want us to be able to have an odd number down there?
However they want to work it out, but I do think that part of the concern that I understood from the letter from the Merit Commission is that they had one representative there, and they didn't feel like their concerns were heard as far as the selection.
Madam Chair, how much money would it cost to buy out the current attorney's contract?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I do not know what the remainder is of the current year's contract. Happy to get that information?
If you could get that, that would be helpful, thank you.
All right, so that's by way of direction, so let's move on then to Community Bond Program Update, item 14, Supervisor Grijalva.
Oh, thank you. So we received information about the Board of Supervisors on December 1, 2020 approved a community bond program, and it's gone out to procurement, it's gone out to bid a couple times. We haven't seen any movement, and I really would like us to get a plan together on, let's see, my understanding is that we're going out for procurement again next, the end of this month?
Correct.
And it's been extended several times. And so at what point do we sort of cut bait and say, okay, this is something that we have to move in-house? And I think that we've reached that point, so the board approved it December 1, 2020, and we're still here 18 months later with no program in place.
And Chair Bronson, Supervisor Grijalva, we did, you are correct in that one of, we've had issues regarding the procurement of an outside contract. When this is, my understanding, when this came to the board initially, and Kate Vesely is here, who is our Director of Justice Services and can speak to this again in greater detail, that the discussion was whether we chose to go outside and find out, you know, external companies or individuals who could manage this program or handle it internally. The direction of the board at the time was that we go outside and go through a procurement process, and that's what we have been going through. That has not been successful in hiring an individual. We are going back out, subject to new direction of the board asking us to continue to manage this internally. I would like Ms. Vesely to give you a quick update on not only where we are, but what that decision point might look like for the board to provide additional direction to the staff.
And just as she's coming up, so my understanding is, this department was not in existence when we, when this RFP was posted, is that right?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Grijalva, that's correct.
Okay, so maybe that would be an opportunity for us to reconsider whether we go out to bid or try to do something in-house. I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah.
Good morning, Chair Bronson, Supervisors. I also want to note that Dean Brought, the Director of Public Defense Services, who was the original author of the Community Bond Program, is here and available to answer questions as well. The RFP, as you mentioned, was sent out last year. We did have to extend it, as Supervisor Grijalva mentioned, because we did not have bids. We did get one application, unfortunately, that person was a county employee at the time. We had to cancel ultimately after an opinion by the county attorney's office that there was a conflict of interest. We have initiated the paperwork to begin the RFP recruitment process again, and that is currently underway, subject, as Ms. Lesher said, to your guys' direction.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, it obviously is a need, because there isn't an outside organization that is able to fill this void in our community. And so I would like to ask our county administrator and staff to look at the legality of moving that into justice services, to see if we can start to implement this program that was voted on 18 months ago. It's almost two years, and so that's my concern, is the need is obviously still there. And, you know, I know in historically working, trying to work with nonprofit organizations and other organizations in our community, at some point, it starts to lose focus on what their mission is, because it's, you're kind of writing to the RFP or the grant. And that, I think, would be an issue for the county as well, because it's sort of outside of their realm of expertise. If history serves in that this has gone out once and now going out again, I am concerned that there just isn't the capacity in our community. Not to say it might not ever be there, but at this point, it isn't, and the problem still exists.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Grijalva, how about we come back with two proposals for you and show you what it would look like for us if we were to suggest a staff allocation and what we might look like if, with Ms. Vesely and Mr. Brought, we could develop a program? And then you could also look at what, we could see where we are with the continuation of the current RFP process for the option to go outside and let the board make a determination about which direction they'd like us to pursue.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I was reviewing the materials that Ms. Lesher and Ms. Vesely submitted to us prior to the meeting, and had some questions that are perhaps even more pertinent, given this new direction. And if you prefer to answer this when you submit new materials to the board, that's fine, but based on what was submitted to us prior to this meeting, I wanted some more details on how this RFP process will significantly differ from the first. If you look at your recommendation, it says, "It is our recommendation that the original board-approved design be continued and that the RFP be reissued. Justice Services will work closely with procurement to measure interest in proposal submissions among potential vendors." I really would like some more detail on how this RFP process is going to significantly differ from the first one.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Scott, that was one of the things that Mr. Brought and I discussed at length, is how do we market this to the community? Because this is very innovative territory. There is no entity out there that exists that can currently do this. In our hope to try and market it to social service entities, nonprofits, we had to talk about how do we create a program that's going to adhere or appeal to their mission, vision, values as nonprofit entities. And while we didn't make significant changes to the actual RFP itself, we are doing a lot more to advertise the RFP. We're putting together a presentation on how you can become a bond agent and what process needs to be involved in that. But we're also encouraging those applicants to think about ways that they can incorporate the program into their design itself. Because an RFP process allows those entities to create a proposal, to create a program of their design, they can find ways to get synergy with some of the other services they provide. For example, if it was a treatment provider that submitted an application, while somebody couldn't be obligated to go to treatment as a condition of their bond, they could use that interaction to say, while I'm here with you, do you have need for housing? Do you have need for transportation? Can we get you connected to benefits? And so those applicants can think about what their core values, what their core services are, and incorporate that into their submission.
And then a couple of other questions, Madam Chair, if I may. If you go to the section in your memo, Ms. Vesely, Options for Board Consideration, second bullet, and this refers to the in-house option, "Has the risk of greater capital required for the bond fund and may present increased liability?" When the board gets the additional information that Ms. Lesher was referring to, I would really like some more detail on those two items. The greater capital that may be required for the bond fund and the increased liability. The other thing, and if the head of Public Defense Services wanted to address this today, that's fine, or we can wait until we get the items. It's certainly clear from the items that you submitted, Ms. Vesely, why public defense services recommend it against an in-house operation, but you mentioned that there were other stakeholder objections. Just wanted to know who those other stakeholders were and why they also objected to an in-house operation.
Mr. Brought was the one who organized all these early days, so he can speak to the historical approach.
Supervisor Bronson, Supervisor Scott, I'm not exactly certain which the other, what opposition we were talking about. Is this to the formation of the program in the beginning, or?
Why we would send it out for contract?
I think one of the reasons to send it out for contract is to check to see with agencies that I think were maybe reluctant to initially bid on it because of unfamiliarity with the process and with the criminal justice system. We're working to educate people on what it would take, and I think that we might be able to get additional and extra people to bid on this this time by, with that information.
What I was referring to, and I apologize, I should have been more specific, is if you look at Ms. Vesely's memo, the section headed Contracted Vendor Versus In-House Operation, in the first paragraph, it says, "At the initial stakeholder meeting, some stakeholders expressed concern with the program if the county operated it. However, consensus among stakeholders was achieved if CBP were to be administered to an outside vendor." So what I was trying to find out is, other than yourself, what other... what I was trying to find out is, other than yourself, what other stakeholders objected and what was the nature of their objections?
Thank you for the clarification, Supervisor, Chair Bronson, Supervisor Scott. The objection was from the then, I believe, Deputy County Administrator that was responsible for finance. And that was, that guidance took us on a different path at that point. And I think in my, I'm trying to recall, but I think that the courts may have been more comfortable with doing an outside agency as well. Because there was an appearance of everything being all in-house seemed to be, having pretrial services engaged with the program and having the court, or having the county administering the program seemed to be a little bit at odds with each other.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Has there been a formal distributed cost-benefit analysis comparing in-house versus an outside agency? Is there, has there any analysis been done on that?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, no, there has not.
I would suggest that that would be a very good starting point. And I would, I would like to suggest to staff that we conduct a cost-benefit analysis to see which is more effective and efficient cost-wise, as well as benefit-wise, for an in-house program versus an outside vendor. I think there are a lot of attributes about an outside vendor, particularly one that doesn't have any connections to any of the administrative functions of the county, and it would give a, I think, a more balanced view of the entire situation. But I think since we've been discussing how difficult it is with the procurement process, that it would be important to find out how much it would cost to have everything done in-house versus an outside vendor. Plus, the legal concerns for liability, that should be included in the mix as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I just wanted to say I concur with Supervisor Christie. I think that would be an excellent addition to the other materials that you were planning to submit. And then just wanted to reiterate the items that I had spoken to previously.
All right, any further discussion? I assume, Staff, you have your direction now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to quickly move to item 25 with somebody who's been waiting here a while and has some other commitments, and that's the Industrial Development Authority. Item 25 is La Posada Push Ridge Project Resolution 2022-29. I will move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. Mike, you can go now. Thank you. You can get on with your life.
Madam Chair, just one quick question. You don't plan on vacating your Posada facility in Green Valley? No, okay, okay, just wanted to make sure.
All right. Moving on to item 15, Joint Task Force to Address Poverty. I think we have a presenter, Bonnie, you want to?
Chair Bronson, Administrator Lesher, and Supervisors, thank you for this opportunity to be with you today for this important conversation on poverty before and as we emerge out of this pandemic. This board has made, passed, and continues to make significant investments in poverty reduction, including my program, Ending Poverty Now. However, this is a crossroads moment, where we can put a sharper focus to better understand and respond to the economic impact of the pandemic, particularly on those families in or near poverty, as an investment not just for today, but for future generations. Next slide. The backdrop of this conversation is always the beauty and rich resources of Pima County's landscape and people, and the resiliency, strengths, and protective factors of our families and community. Nonetheless, historically, Pima County has had high levels of poverty, which will almost certainly have increased because of the pandemic. Next. To make the most lasting impact, we need to understand that before the pandemic, poverty disproportionately impacted low-income women, children, single parents, and families of color. Those are the same groups that have been hardest hit by the pandemic. Therefore, this is a critical area to focus resources. Next. So, let's take a quick picture of poverty in Pima County before the pandemic, and this is how we typically measure poverty using federal guidelines. It's probably very familiar to you. But I've added the last two columns to show what 200% of poverty threshold is and the hourly wage needed by a single earner to hit this. And note that all of those wages are above the minimum wage. So why 200%? Because many families under 200% are working hard but struggling to cover the basic needs on a monthly basis, and they likely don't have much savings. So that means when a crisis like a pandemic hits, these families are at risk of losing ground and falling into poverty. In Pima County, in 2019, before the pandemic, that was 37% of the population. Preventing poverty means also addressing the needs of these families. Next. And so with these federal guidelines, here's the picture of poverty in Pima County in 2020. About 16% of individuals or more than 62,000 people. And so we can see the geographic disparity comparing, say, Morana at 5.6% and Sells at 40.8. Next. We also have an age disparity, where children are the largest population living in poverty, both in Pima County and the country. And we should all be very concerned for many reasons, including the fact that research tells us that the sooner and the longer you are in poverty, the harder it is to get out. Next. So the cycle of poverty is expensive. We can see how poverty impacts health and educational attainment, which creates a challenged workforce. We lose that human capital, and as a result, it lowers our overall economic output. So Canada developed a formula estimating the cost of poverty to their provinces, and using that formula, the best estimate is $2.2 billion annually, or almost 6% of GDP. So reducing poverty is a smart business and economic development strategy. Next. So to turn to the personal and economic impact of the pandemic, which I'm sure we'll be studying for years, but we do know it has already widened historic equity gaps. So the University of Oregon did a survey of over 10,000 families from March of 2020 to March of 2021 that showed that 40% of families couldn't pay for basics like rent, utilities, and groceries, and that goes up to 60% for black Latinx and single-headed households. And we know women were hit harder overall, both because they were likely to experience job loss in sectors like hospitality and leisure, or were forced to leave work for loss of childcare or the demands of virtual schooling. Next. So that's why economists call this a K recovery, meaning two very different economic experiences if you were at the top or the bottom of the K. The top of the K are those families who probably had college education and had jobs that allowed them to work from home, they could support their children virtually, they had savings and investments, they were likely healthier, could more easily socially distance, and as a result, in their circle of family and friends, had fewer illnesses, hospitalizations, and deaths. But life looks very different at the bottom of the K. For those families, they were likely to have lost income and work, or were those essential workers on the front lines, being exposed to greater stress and to the virus. They may have been challenged by technology, internet access, and had harder times supporting their children in school. They were likely less healthy, had more potential for exposure, and in their circle of family and friends, more loss and illness. In other words, they were more likely to have had major trauma and significant disruptions. Next. So this is an opportunity to rethink poverty. The Federal Reserve of San Francisco asks us not to define it as an economic measure at a point in time, but the systematic denial of opportunity and choice over time that results in social exclusion and vulnerability, which has serious implications for the mental, emotional, and behavioral health of someone in poverty. Next. So we can think of poverty as ecology, as this complex set of factors that are cumulative and dynamic, and the more you confront, the harder it is to get out of poverty. That can be everything from poor nutrition, to greater likelihood of chronic illness, to more exposure to crime, noise, pollution, overcrowding, and more. Next. And we can think of poverty as environment. That can affect everything from where you live, to where you send your children to school, who's in your social circle, where you worship and work, and even how healthy you are and your life expectancy. And in Pima County, as across the country, poverty concentrates, which makes it harder to get out of as well. Next. So if poverty is a complex set of factors that has generational impact, what have we been doing? What are we doing? Next. And I'd like to focus on my department, Community and Workforce Development, which has a long history, as you know, of innovative strategies and a very large community footprint. Next. We have over a $50 million impact throughout our five one-stops and two schools that impacts tens of thousands of adults and children. Next. And we use a no-wrong-door approach, which during the pandemic meant that we took it a step further with expanded virtual one-stop and the use of resource navigators to connect job seekers with county and community resources. Next. We also took the lead on eviction prevention, because we knew without a home, people can't keep a job, their kids can't go to school, and it had a greater likelihood of spreading the virus and leading to more hospitalizations and death. And so Pima County, along with the city of Tucson, opened up an internet portal for one door for rent assistance applications with lots of innovations, like landlords being able to apply and a real-time dashboard, which meant we pushed out $62 million to more than 11,000 households, placing Pima County in the top 10% of counties nationally for delivering rent aid. And thanks to this board and the Pima County Eviction and Homelessness Prevention Task Force that met in the fall of 2020, you voted to launch the Emergency Eviction Legal Services Program, the second right-to-counsel program in the state of Arizona for tenants. And since August, we've not only referred more than 670 tenants to legal counsel, our navigators also connect tenants to jobs, we work closely with the courts and constables, and when all else fails, help families from becoming homeless with transitional housing at an area hotel. And you also focused on the next generation. Again, with leadership of this board, Pima County, along with the city of Tucson and other municipalities, made a $30 million investment in quality early childhood education for those families at or below 200% of poverty. And over the weekend, PEEP's celebrated its first year with a very successful community outreach event. Next. So the Health Department is also focusing on poverty as one of their four priority areas from their Community Health Needs Assessment. Next. So the question is, can we create a post-pandemic community where everyone lives well? And if the answer is yes, then we must focus our priorities at people at the bottom of the K, those low-income families, single-headed households, and families of color. Next. And research tells us that we have to move beyond just safety net strategies and focus on areas of prevention, aiding the transition, and addressing structures. Next. And it requires us to take a close look at our important resources and good programs to make sure we're hitting the most vulnerable members of our community, and that's being equity-focused and data-driven. And we need that cathedral thinking by making investments in the next generation. Next. I'm very grateful for your time and the opportunity to begin this important conversation at this important moment in our history to address poverty, and I'm happy to answer questions or to come to your office and meet with you and your staff to answer questions and have more discussion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bonnie. Well done. I usually don't like PowerPoint presentations, but you did a good job.
Oh, thank you so much, Chair Bronson.
Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Heinz, did you, we can't hear you.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, there we go.
You can hear, can't hear. Oh, good, okay. Yeah, well, thank you. I appreciate all of your, your hard work, Bonnie, and your team. I think this is, this is a really great presentation and summary of kind of where we're at. You know, poverty is a huge issue for Pima County and disproportionately. So as you pointed out, I know that you recently also made a similar presentation to the city of Tucson and at the city council meeting, as well as the mayor, of course. And I was pleased to hear that, I believe it was Council Member Santa Cruz proposed a joint, a joint task force on poverty with the county, and that passed unanimously. And so I would like to move that we respond to that by agreeing to form that joint task force on poverty with the city of Tucson, from the, from the Pima County side of things, in either of your, your presentation.
A second. Discussion. I, that's vague. I don't know what it means. I guess I'm going to start out. And I don't know what it's going to cost. And I don't know who gets to be on the task force. So there are a lot of questions that, the idea of a task force, a joint task force is fine, but there's got to be some details in it, and some, it's got to be outcome-driven.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Did Supervisor Heinz want to respond first before I ask my question?
There's a motion and a second on Supervisor Heinz. Do you have any, did you want to respond, or do you want, can we go to Supervisor Christie?
Oh, no, I, I agree that we need to have, obviously, you know, we have to have, work out some of these details, of course, but I think it's important to get the ball rolling. And Supervisor Christie, please.
Thank you.
And with that, I, Ms. Lesher, I don't know, I guess it would be, I mean, you're working already with the city of Tucson, Bonnie?
Yes.
So do you have any, well, why don't you work with Ms. Lesher's office and get us some details and recommendations?
Very good.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie, yes.
I think we might have a solution to a lot of the questions that I share with the chair, as she addressed them. Poverty is a regional problem. It's not a city of Tucson problem. It's not a Pima County problem. It's a regional problem that involves all the jurisdictions and unincorporated, as well as the, the city, as well as the county itself. I would suggest that if this is going to be something that this board wants to enact, to study poverty, that first of all, in another agenda item coming up about this, from the Small Business Commission, poverty will be addressed in those sections because a lot of poverty has to do with lack of jobs. So that's a consideration. Secondly, we have a structure already in place that is fully capable and fully ready to conduct these kinds of informative surveys and studies, and that's the Pima Association of Governments. This would incorporate all of the jurisdictions and all of the membership in the region. And Pima Association of Governments is fully capable of providing that information, that research, that analysis and data-driven information that you're looking for. And it removes, I think, any kind of taint of politicization or narrative that might reduce the impact of a study like this. So I would, I would recommend that before we join in anything with the city of Tucson, I have certain reservations about the city of Tucson and getting involved with them to this length, that we first explore a much more comprehensive and regional approach through the Pima Association of Governments, and that we direct this item that we want to work with the city of Tucson on, if that is indeed the case, to be driven by a Pima Association of Governments. And of course, of course, that includes the nations as well, which are particularly poverty, poverty-stricken. So if there is a way that this whole concept-
And then South Tucson, well, actually, that's not a bad idea.
All of the membership, and of course, we have Supervisor Scott that serves on it as well, and he could be our representative involved in that. But I think the staffing and the knowledge of the region through the Pima Association of Governments would be the, the best and most responsible and transparent form of, of a method that we could actually take a real hard look at this in an unbiased, non-political fashion. And I, I fear that if we get involved with the city of Tucson, that we won't get the, the real, true look at things from an unbiased lens as we would if we went through the Pima Association of Governments.
Ms. Lesher, did you have a response?
Chair Bronson, I think as, as direction, what I have heard is, first of all, you'd like some information generally about the granularity of what a task force might look like, how that would be compiled, who might pay for any of that. Second, that you'd like it to be greater than the city of Tucson and expanded- Second, that you'd like it to be greater than the city of Tucson and expanded and to include those within the region, with the first step being to contact PAG and see whether this could be a regional effort as part of PAG. And after we have those conversations, though, the direction is clearly to simply continue with a county-wide, with all five incorporated jurisdictions and the nations, if not under PAG, under us, and we can come back in the future with plans to develop those issues forward, if I've understood the direction correctly.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. I very much appreciate Supervisor Christie's comments. The Pima Association of Governments, beyond being a metropolitan planning organization, is also a council of governments. And the council of government's function, as I've observed during the year and a half that I've been our representative, has not been explored to the same extent as the metropolitan planning organization, given the necessary focus in our area on transportation issues. But I think if we wanted to look at areas of focus for any kind of holistic look at poverty on a regional basis, the slide that Ms. Bazada provided, the Alice Slide, asset limited, income constrained, employed, you're looking at the areas of housing, utilities, food, childcare, healthcare, transportation, cell phone. Though it would be instructive for the board to get some information on not only what the county is doing in those areas, but what the other jurisdictions, including the tribal governments and the nonprofit sector, are doing in those areas. And I think if we had that kind of foundational information and expansion, really, on the outstanding information in this presentation, but on a more regional basis, that might give us an actual proposal to put forth to the Pima Association of Governments.
Chair Bronson, can I ask, what, the item that the city approved and the task force, did they outline goals, or was it more to try to wade through this process to come up with outcome objectives and like a plan?
Chair Bronson and Supervisor Grealva, there wasn't a lot of specificity in the motion, so I think it was sort of idea of it would be left up to develop a plan.
Okay.
And I think the idea, too, was to have our departments also start to work more closely together, and, which we do collaborate a lot, obviously, but I think to have a more, a keener focus on the area of poverty and how we might better utilize our joint resources.
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense, especially because we do receive a lot of the same funding, different amounts, depending on what the issue is, and it makes sense for us to not duplicate effort. And so that was the idea for my second, but I wanted to check in with Supervisor Heinz to see if what's sort of evolved here on the dais for that item to come back. And if you're not objecting to that, then I can withdraw my second, or you can, you know, request a postponement of the item to our next board meeting. How did you want to move forward?
Or when we get into the next board meeting?
Whenever the information was available from the county attorney.
Well, I don't have, I don't really believe it's appropriate to throw this over to PAG. I'm really confident in the leadership there to do this. I think that 85-plus percent of the region is the city of Tucson and Pima County, and the vast, vast majority of poverty and those suffering from poverty are in our jurisdictions. I would like to retain as much control over the process as possible, and I don't have faith that we will be able to do that if this is thrown over to PAG. It doesn't feel to me like that's really their focus or has ever been their focus. It would be a new thing for them, and I think that we need to be watching this very, very closely, given that the impact it's having on, what, 37% of our constituents. So I would prefer that this remain joint between the city of Tucson and the county. And we could certainly look to expanding it to other jurisdictions as well, but I don't, I wouldn't prefer this not go through PAG.
Okay. Chair Bronson, I do think that the information that our county administrator and staff are going to put together is really going to highlight whatever the objective should be of a task force. And so at this point, in reading the dais, I don't think that we, there are votes to move forward with this item the way it is until we have some of that additional data. And so if, I would just suggest that we postpone this item until we have that information and then bring it back, because at this point, it would fail, and I do think that there's merit in having this discussion. I just, I didn't want it to fail. So I'll go ahead and withdraw my second.
Okay. Your second has been withdrawn. Is there a second? Hearing non-motion fails for lack of a second. And then we've got direction to staff, I think, and go, once we get the information, we can re, or we can decide on an action plan. All right.
Very good.
Okay. Moving on to items, no, thank you. Moving on to item 16, county administrator update, and I guess we're looking at 17, 18, and 19 as well, Ms. Lesher.
Thank you, Chair Bronson, and I'll move quickly through just a few items I did wish to highlight.
Mike, we can't hear you.
I think it's on. I think I'm just slid back somehow.
Okay.
So can you hear me now? Thank you. A few things I just wanted to make sure to bring to your attention. I think one that is exciting for us, we've got 19 individuals I want to give a shout out to who have come over, overcome some pretty substantial obstacles. They will be receiving their GEDs at Pima Vocational High Schools graduation ceremony this Thursday. For those of you who have attended that in the past, it's pretty astonishing. They join, excuse me, seven individuals who did get their GED through our La Sartes program in May. And so shout out to not only those students who have done so well, but to our programs, to Dan and all of his team who have made that possible. It was mentioned earlier, we did have our one-year anniversary or celebration of the PEEPS program. There was a resource fair this last weekend at Kino, and thanks to everyone who attended. It's always great to see the kids who are getting involved in that program. One interesting program, we've got a landfill that has a new lease on life, the Ina Road landfill, which is located on the east bank of the Santa Cruz River, south of Ina, is being covered with soil, revegetated, and will later hold solar panels for the Regional Wastewater Eclamation Department. It's taking biosolids from the wastewater treatment process, turning them into waste and creating fertilizer into rich nutrients. The agricultural industry has been partnering with us, and it's a pretty exciting program as well, so always good to see how we repurpose a few of those areas. Shout out to Fleet Services and JTED. The Fleet Services Department, as we mentioned, is one of our departments that has occasionally struggled to hire individuals. We are working in conjunction with JTED, and we have our first intern coming into Fleet Services this year, coming out of the JTED's automotive program. Our hope is that we will, again, be able to use this with a articulated program into Pima Community College, so that we not only have students coming from JTED, learning a great skill at our Fleet Services, providing service. And my hope eventually is that we can work on a, some sort of scholarship program within Pima County, Pima College's program as well. And talking about Pima College, I'm excited to report, we just got word yesterday that we did get, we've been allocated under a congressionally-directed spending allocation of $2.7 million, that's to Pima County's collaborative One Stop, that is going to be allowing our One Stop program to expand and be in the heart of Pima Community College's, the downtown campus. It's a, it's a great new opportunity for us to take One Stop, which is our way of trying to make sure that people can successfully re-enter workforce and putting them in the middle of one of the largest Pima College campuses, using those federal funds. So more to come on that, but we're truly excited. I think you all received a copy, I'm very pleased to announce, we did receive the Arizona Otter Generals Report. They completed the audit of our federal compliance audit. They looked at eight of Pima County's major federal programs for the last fiscal year. It is a completely clean audit. And that's not only all of our major federal programs, but it is not only the money that we use, but then how we subcontract and grant that to others. And to get through a complete audit of that with no findings at all is extraordinary and a huge shout out to Grants Management and Innovation and our Finance and Risk Management Department for that work. And finally, just an update, we, the Pima County Strategic Planning Task Force for county-wide access to broadband has been continuing to meet and is making great progress in making sure that everyone has access to internet and to services. We have a, we have flyers that are going into the Tucson Water Department's water bills to make sure that people are aware of that program. Always important because I think what tends to happen is we use the internet to reach out to people to see if they have access to the internet, thus obviously causing some fairly significant issues. So we're now actually reaching out to everyone in their home. So those are just a few of the programs I wish to highlight. So thank you very much for your time and your patience on that.
All right. Moving on to item 17.
Item 17. What this was in the past, Supervisor Christie had brought back in May, looking at requesting some possible expansion, discussion, modification to our whistleblower protection language, which is part of C21, which is our workplace ethics context and compliance. We were minding you in the memo of what the current non-retaliation section says. If that did not appear to be substantial enough for the board, we proposed some additional language, making sure that there might be additional whistleblower coverage and protection for employees. There was no action taken. There was a request that we send this information out and see if there was feedback. We did not receive any. And so at this point, what we are looking for is simply the direction from the staff, from the board, if there's recommendation. If there is a desire to expand or enhance on the current C21 language about non-retaliation, we have proposed language in your memo of June 7 regarding how we might be able to expand protection to employees for disclosing any information. So I look forward simply for board guidance on this item.
Or any, do we need?
Absent any action, we will assume that the current policy stays in place without amendment.
That was my question. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm fine with the current policy. Looks like we've got a consensus.
We will move that forward. Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on to COLAS, Pima County Cost of Living Adjustments, item 18.
Chair Bronson, if I may, we have, in the recommended budget for the year, we do have salary adjustments or wage increases that were proposed at a 5%, 3%, and 1% raise proposed, depending upon the salary of the individual. Since that time, you know, over the last several days, including earlier this morning, additional proposals have been made by Supervisor Heinz, Supervisor Grealva, and Supervisor Scott. We have gotten those to you as quickly as we can. We do have, in Supervisor Grealva's question, suggestions, we were able to get to you this morning what the cost might be. We did not have the number of those employees. We now have that, and I think Ms. Campaign can answer that. But as we go through the different proposals, happy to answer any questions we can, we don't have the granularity yet on what Supervisor Scott's proposal might look like, but my request to the board today is that if we could get direction to staff about how the board would like us to proceed with the implementation of any either salary adjustments, cost of living increases, whatever you propose, we need that direction today, if at all possible, in order to, well, we need it today in order to stay on the timeline, which would have overall budget finalization and adoption of the budget in two weeks. Because I know that there's a lot that Michelle and her team have to do, not only with the county finance, but with the state of Arizona, and there are things we need to do to make sure that we've incorporated all of your direction. Without specific direction today, we would request perhaps either a special board meeting or delay of the final adoption until the July 5 board meeting. But if direction is given to us today, given today regarding one of the new proposals, if we could even simply get, here's what we would recommend, and we direct staff to find a way to make it so and give us some direction, we can continue to work forward in bringing a proposed budget back to the board.
So is my understanding is that Supervisor Grealva has proposed, has recommended some items, as has Supervisor Scott and Supervisor Heinz. So I think you have your direction. I just, whatever it is, I assume you're going to share with the remaining board members. So when we do final adoption on June 21, there will be those options. Am I correct?
Chair Bronson, what I think we're looking for today is if the board could take action and give us direction on which of the, if there is a desire to modify the current recommended budget with the inclusion of any of the various options proposed by any of Supervisor Scott, Grealva, or Heinz, if we could get that direction today, if the board can vote on that and give us some direction so that we can understand what it is we need to do, if we need to continue to, how we need to address or modify the budget in order to accommodate those adjustments.
Chair Bronson.
Madam Chair.
Oh, which one?
Well, Supervisor-
Madam Chair.
Well, Supervisor Grealva first.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I like the idea of the staggered, depending on income. I think that that seems to resonate pretty well with all of us. The reason that I'd suggested maybe looking at people that are on the lower salary schedule in our, in our county is because I know that every increase is hitting them just a little harder than the rest of us. All of the inflation issues are hitting every employee, I understand that. But I was looking at, looking at inflation, trying to make sure that we accommodate a little bit, and I know that Supervisor Scott was trying to come to some sort of happy medium. My only concern is the recommended budget scenario that was proposed by Ms. Lesher is at $18 million. Is that correct? $18,461, the recommended budget scenario? Okay. And so would we, any additions to that, the cuts are going to have to come somewhere. And so I've heard repeatedly, Ms. Lesher in memos, and it's like, we'll do whatever you want, we'll figure it out, whatever you want us to do. My worry is how that gets figured out, not necessarily right now, but in a year or two. Because I think I have PTSD from having proposed increases and then a year or two later having to cut positions because it's just not something that was sustainable. And so what I was hoping for is that we would get some of these numbers and then sort of be able to tweak something, but given that we don't have all of that information, what I would like to do is modify the original recommendation of 10% for anyone that's under $35,000 to where inflation is at 8.5, which I think addresses some of what I saw in Supervisor Scott's proposal, that there was a big gap from 10% to 5%. So it was this sort of, you're trying to stagger it in. So if we, if we do, anyone in our county that's under 35, and you all can look at that, I mean, if there's a pretty large number of employees that are at 35, you know, 32, whatever, I mean, 36, I mean, you will have some wiggle room there, but then that way, the scale is 8 and 1/2, 5, 3, and 1. And so the only change would be for a little bit greater bump for those that are making 35 or below. And I think the budget impact would be, the budget impact for 10% was $940,000. And so if it's 8.5, it will be a little less. That's, my only worry is with, I appreciate both Supervisor Scott and Supervisor Heinz's proposals. My worry is if we do something that's pretty significant right now, we may not be able to do increases the following fiscal year and might actually have to cut. And so those were my worries. And I'm willing to discuss any, anything, because I know that the goal here is, is to make sure that our employees are able to have a comfortable cost of living. And that's where I was sort of targeting those in our county that are making 35 or less. Thanks.
Chair Bronson, if I may, one of the things we've looked at is, I think, in some of the memos that I've sent prior to the initial budget, was to suggest that if there are additional increases, that one of the things we look at is the elimination of PCNs or the personnel control numbers. And that speaks to, I think, what Supervisor Grealva has mentioned, which is, one of our great concerns is using what I consider one-time money or the availability of additional funds this year because of a significant fund balance, to spend those dollars on things that will continue into the future has the potential to take us off a cliff in a couple of years. And so we want to make sure that we have not only planned for- And so we want to make sure that we have not only planned for whatever, making sure that our workforce continues to be appropriately compensated and fairly compensated, but that we have the ability to sustain it in the future. So I think that's what we would look at, is simply any proposal proposed today, if it would include the direction that I'd be allowed to work with Finance and HR, and that we look at the elimination of PCNs in order to accommodate those increases.
Okay.
That's Chair Bronson.
Supervisor. Heinz.
Thank you. I believe that, and I really appreciate that we're having this discussion. I think it's incredibly important, you know, to attract, retain employees across every pay scale, frankly. I appreciate a lot of what Supervisor Scott has done with his proposal. I think it's very clear, and it gives clear direction to staff. And I think we should consider adopting this. My only hesitation, and this is to respond in part to Supervisor Grealva, is that, and also, we, my office, we reached out to, I believe it's nine, eight or nine different department heads, just to kind of get some ideas from them, you know, how this would impact them, do they want this, do they not, you know, giving up PCNs. Some, you know, we're okay with that, others maybe not. But if we could, half of the cost, if that could be borne by the general fund ending balance, the surplus that we anticipate at the end of fiscal year '23, instead of trying to extract every single dollar that this might cost from individual departments, I think that would be great. So I would like to move that we adopt Supervisor Scott's proposal and just have half of the cost come from the anticipated general fund ending balance for 2023.
I, in terms of adopting, we adopt at the final budget, not today.
So I don't have to make a motion to.
We give direction to staff to come back with a recommendation at the time of final budget adoption. So we're, to adopt a proposal today, the appropriate time is at final budget adoption. What we're giving, what we're doing today is giving direction to staff about what that final budget adoption proposal for raises is going to be. And that will come as a memo from the county administrator. But what I have said, and I think Ms. Lesher has also, and County Administrator Lesher, we better have a decent fund balance because our bond ratings depend on it. And we're using our bond ratings to, in terms of COPs, Certificates of Participation. And if we fall below, if our bond rating falls, we're in trouble. So the fund balance that is at the, you know, that we roll over into our next fiscal year budget had better be sufficient to keep our bond rating at its current rate. And if we drop below that, we're not going to have the ability to do certificates of participation, and that's dangerous.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott.
Supervisor Scott. Was Supervisor Heinz going to respond?
Supervisor Heinz.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Could, maybe we could, could we clarify? I just want to make sure from Administrator Lesher, are you requesting the board to take a vote on the options before us now? Or what kind of direction were you seeking from us today?
Direction. Chair Bronson, yes. Supervisor Heinz, I'm looking for direction today from the board regarding which, what you are recommending, what you are instructing us to include in the final budget related to the salary increases. Yes.
By way of a vote.
Please.
By way of direction.
Okay.
Correct.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott.
Ms. Lesher, just to follow up on that point earlier, you said either provide some direction today, or schedule a special board meeting, or delay adoption to a later date.
Chair Bronson, thank you. Supervisor Scott, you're correct. What I, my, in response to Supervisor Scott Heinz's question, it is assuming you want to move forward with the continuation of our current schedule, which has the adoption of the final budget two weeks from today on June 17th.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, I'm sorry.
Twenty-first.
Beg your pardon. So other options would be to find another time to give us the direction, but we would have to move back when we do the final budget adoption.
Right.
Thank you.
So just to expand on why I sent everybody what I did this morning, when the recommended budget came out, Supervisor Heinz had some suggested revisions to the salary increases that were in the recommended budget. He then made revisions to his revisions. And then Supervisor Grealva weighed in with a proposal of her own. And what I was pondering this morning, probably way too early, was how to find some kind of, to use your term, happy medium between those proposals. But I know two things. Number one, that since I just sent that to you this morning, you haven't had time to put the numbers together that we need to make a full determination as to whether that is even a viable proposal. And secondly, I would concur with what Chair Bronson just said and draw on language that you sent to us last week, Ms. Lesher, with regard to the importance of having a fulsome fund, beginning fund, beginning general fund balance. I definitely wouldn't want to do anything to upset that apple cart. So although I appreciate Supervisor Heinz's support, I wouldn't be ready to vote for my own proposal until we have those numbers. I am, however, ready to make a motion, and it's consistent with the request that we just got from Ms. Lesher. And my motion is that whatever proposal we adopt, that it include direction to the county administration, that they use vacancy savings, making use of the strategy of cutting PCNs to make that proposal happen.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Grealva, and Supervisor, oh, I think you were next in line. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
You know, I kind of hate to rain on everybody's parade, but I don't think with the current economic conditions, now is the time to be making across-the-board raises. Call me old-fashioned, I had my own business for decades, and for some reason, I prefer giving people merit raises based on what they do as far as productivity and meeting goals. This is an across-the-board request for raises in all categories. And for everyone's information, if you look at the calculations in the background, since 2018, those making under $50,000 have received a 12 and a half percent raise. And those making more than $50,000 have had a nine and a half percent raise. We're also using inaccurate information. These proposals and agendas have been called cost-of-living raises, but we don't see any indication of what the cost of living is. We don't see any cost-of-living indexes. So how can we figure out what the cost of living is if we're using inflation? Inflation is not an accurate or a responsible way to conduct any kind of pay plan. Because if we go into recession and everything drops, are we going to cut everybody's pay accordingly, based on inflation? So our staff, as long as we've had these pay increases, has opted out. I don't think any of my colleagues' staff has opted out of automatic pay raises, but we are. And I believe the head of one of the largest financial institutions said, we have an economic hurricane right out the door there. We don't know how big or when it's coming. And I find it very concerning that we're talking about giving substantial across-the-board raises to everybody in these conditions, and there's no talk of giving raises to those who deserve it based on merit. So quite frankly, whatever proposals come up as far as automatic raises in any categories for any employees, I will be voting against them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair Bronson, I think it's incredibly important that we point out right now that Supervisor Christie's staff did receive the raises. He just calls them merit-based. So I'm really sick of hearing that he doesn't, that his staff doesn't participate in the raises.
Let's be civil.
We do, yeah. We, I have given raises based on their productivity, goals of customer, of constituent services, and a whole host of things that they've had to meet, which they have. And I'm very proud of my staff, and they deserved merit raises. But they and I don't agree with automatic raises given by the county at any time, and we've been opting them out.
Thank you, Supervisor Christie. Supervisor Scott.
I just, sorry, just wanted to once again make the motion that whatever proposal we adopt, that vacancy savings be part of putting that proposal into effect. That was the request that we got from the county administrator. And although we don't have a specific proposal, she has requested the ability to use vacancy savings in putting into effect whatever proposal the board adopts.
So that was in the form of a motion, correct?
Yes.
And off second.
Yeah. No, that's okay. The only issue that I have is that's about $5 million in vacancy savings. And that's sort of the cap that I've seen in every scenario. It's $5 million, you know, 54,756. And then we just have to make sure that whatever scenario comes up, that the next fiscal year, that's money that won't be there, that we're going to have to figure out how to fund. And because it's to the base, that's something that's going to continue to increase. And so I don't, I know that we have to figure out a solution, absolutely. I just would not feel comfortable moving forward with the compromise that Supervisor Scott brought up for the point that he brought up. It's like, we don't have the numbers for that yet. I do think that if we look at an 8.5% for those of our employees making 35 or less, that it would be definitely under a million, because 10% for that same group was $940,000. So percentage-wise, I do think we do have to address the fact that our employees that are making, everyone, everyone, I understand, is stressing with the increased costs, but that in, that group of employees, I'm sure, is more financially stressed, I think. So, but I'm willing to go ahead and support the concept that it goes to vacancy savings and not the carry-forward, the fund balance, the carry-forward.
So that was the motion on the floor. And I think we've exhausted the discussion at this point.
Probably.
Let's do a roll call vote on the motion.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Grealva?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
I don't know what we're voting on. I'm sorry. Which proposal is this?
That Supervisor Heinz, we're voting on whatever salary increase package we adopt, that vacancy savings be part of the strategy for putting that proposal into effect, and that was at the request of the county administrator.
So it's not a specific proposal?
No.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Bronson?
Yes. By your vote of 4-1, motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott.
Just while we're on this subject, Ms. Lesher, consistent with a recent conversation you and I had, I would like some written, written guidance to the board as to how vacancy savings are going to be not just a strategy for dealing with this issue, but a long-term strategy with regard to how we're handling county finances.
Got it. Thank you.
Chair Bronson, and so are we going to have this conversation at our next meeting so we have specific guidance on what the salary schedule is going to look like? Or do you need us to schedule something before our next scheduled board meeting?
Excuse me, I'm finding out whether, is it possible to bring a budget forward with a variety of options and what that looks like?
Our issue will be that it will not be in our planning and budgeting system. I can't put various scenarios within it. Therefore, if we could twindle it down, that would be great.
So I guess we're, I don't know that we're quite ready as a board to do that today. But I'm wondering, between now and our next board meeting, are you going to need us to have a special meeting in order to speak specifically to this issue?
At the June 21 meeting, we will have to bring state schedules to the meeting for you to approve or to vote on. And those are the state schedules that we won't be able to create if we don't have the set amount. Because I won't be able to go into a specific department and actually change their budget from a PCN perspective if I don't know how much I'm actually covering.
So I'm hearing yes. We need a meeting before our next scheduled board meeting.
Or we move budget adoption, we do it at the next meeting, and we move budget adoption until your July 5th meeting would be the two options.
Okay. So what, what do you think? I'm just, the reason why I was asking.
Supervisor Heinz.
Thanks. Just quickly, I know that Supervisor Scott and also Supervisor Grealva are concerned about not having exact numbers. We do actually have exact numbers for the first scenario that I recommended, which is, I mean, I'm sure we could modify slightly, but that would get us most of the way to what both Supervisor Grealva and Supervisor Scott are recommending. So why don't we maybe look at giving that specific direction so that we can keep this schedule timeline in place?
I'm not comfortable.
Yeah, Chair Bronson, the only issue that I have with that Supervisor Heinz is that it varies between almost $19 million and almost $25 million. And so depending on where we cut the percentage, that's a pretty significant lift. And so I, I think that it, unless there's a conflict with schedules, maybe we can figure out a day next week where, once we have all the numbers.
Or just move the final adoption to the 5th.
Is that going to be, is that going to be problematic?
Shouldn't. Actually, it might be better. We'll know, state lets will have adjourned, so we'll know what damages.
I'm just asking, yeah, I know that, like, every time you move, in Finance and HR, every time you move a week, you're like, what are you doing to me?
Chair Bronson, I think, and Supervisor Grealva, the advantage we have is that the 5th is the first Tuesday after the weekend of the 4th, and so there's not a lot of activity that's coming and rolling into that. We certainly could, we're looking, we were just going over, we're looking at the numbers now. We have everything, what the number, the bottom-line impact would be for everything other than Supervisor Scott's. We do not have that yet. And so we can get that out to you right away and schedule.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
As quickly as possible.
We got the bottom line on every proposal to see, yeah.
Okay.
Backs always help.
So we'll, so we'll vote on the 21st, and then we'll have final budget adoption on the 5th?
Right.
Okay. Is that okay? All right.
I think we know what we did. I'm just, Ms. Lesher, are you clear?
Chair Bronson, I believe we are going to provide you with the bottom-line impact for the various scenarios that have been proposed by Supervisors Grealva, Heinz, and Scott, let you see what the bottom line looks like. You will vote on a recommended plan forward on your meeting on the 21st, and we will incorporate that and bring back then final budget adoption on July 5th.
And Chair Bronson, if there's any of these scenarios that you think are workable, other than the one that you initially provided, if you think any of these tweaks are helpful, then feel free to just put your stamp on whichever one. None of us will take it personally. But I do think that it would be helpful, since you're the one that's going to have to look at the long-term impacts, and we're making decisions here, you know, I think that, and you have a fuller, a pretty broad picture of all of the other financial obligations that the county is going to be experiencing.
Thank you. We will include a recommendation.
Thanks.
Madam Chair.
Oh, and Chair Bronson.
I concur with Supervisor Grealva, everything that she just said. And then, Ms. Lesher, the request that I made for something in writing to the board on the long-term vacancy savings strategy, please feel free to wait to provide that to us until after we're done with all of our budgetary shenanigans.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on then to item 19, option to fund open space and affordable housing.
Chair Bronson, what the board has before you at the, excuse me, we've, there has been a request to fund the $2 million for open space and $5 million for future Affordable Housing Task Force recommendations so that. housing task force recommendations, so that there's some budget capacity to accommodate whatever recommendations might come from that group. And we have recommended, we needed to find 7 million dollars, we are recommending, excuse me, that we delay 1.2 million in a volleyball plan that was a PEGO project, reduce, not eliminate, but, but reduce the initial, the first phase of funding for Canoa Ranch campground development, and that those two total $2 million, and would be the recommended proposal to pay for, $2 million for the open space fund. The $5 million reserve for the future affordable housing recommendations, we're looking at eliminating the $3 million contingency inflation fuel. Security reserve with the understanding that as those numbers go up, they will probably then be coming out of budgets, but that's an option of how we can fund the 5 million, as well as eliminating $2 million in simply operating transfers out of facilities management renewal funds. Both of those are additional funds contingencies from which we can not eliminate current programs, but fund the 5 million fund for future affordable housing allocations. Again, it's my understanding that at this point, there is no specific desire to, there is no plan for the expenditure, expenditure of either of the two in the $5 million funds, but simply they would become funds that would be available, in effect, restricted funds going into future budgets for use by this board.
Yeah, and Chair Bronson, one other thing that, you know, what we learned with peeps, it's like, the allocation is there, it's a new funding source, is likely that it will not be zeroed out, and I think it's important for us to, together with administration, to create a, a spending plan. And it's, I think that it's important for us to establish the line item in case there is an opportunity for us to acquire lands near protected areas.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie?
Thank you. One of the confusing elements and troubling elements of this particular proposal, it says, "Option to fund open space and affordable housing." I'm, I'm confused, is that going to be, are the, is, are we going to put affordable housing on the open space, or is it by, we're spending X amount for, 2 million for open space and 5 million for future affordable housing? Is that 5 million of a future affordable housing going to go on the $2 million for open space? We talked about this before, and I've, I've just mentioned earlier that, that Pima County should not be in the affordable housing business, yet apparently since 1992, we have been, yet we have no data that can display exactly what that consortium with Pima County and other entities has produced as far as affordable housing. And we also talked, last meeting, I think for sure, that before we did anything of this nature, we were going to get an inventory of available Pima County property, and we haven't received that, we haven't seen what properties are out there, and the open space, what, what open space is available, is that Pima County open space property? Is it just land that somebody is sitting on? Is that going to become open space? It's very nebulous. It, it gets to the point where you look around the city and the county, and you see nothing but county-owned buildings. And we don't know what, what those buildings are, or the inventory, and we also don't have any task force recommendations on this. I haven't seen any task force recommendations, so I would just like to note that in this number, in this item, it, it speaks to reducing the Canoa Ranch campground development. That generates revenue for the county, and after all, it is the homestead of Congressman Raul Gruhala, is it not? Yeah, so, I'm sure, so, I'm, I'm not in favor of any of these bullet points, and I'm not in favor of spending $5 million for future affordable housing, or $2 million for open space. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor. What's the pleasure of the board on this item?
I'd like to go ahead and move the item and anticipate getting, we, we did receive a list of properties, Pima County properties, if I recall, and obviously, this is, any, any expenditures out of these line items would come to the board. It's not, it's not, you know, the, the money is there, and then it will disappear, and we'll just start purchasing things. This is all to establish a, a budget line item in finance, to make sure that it's something that is accessible, and I, you know, I think it is a little misleading that it's both together, but I think they were both ideas that I brought forward, so maybe that's why they were both put under the same header, but it is open space and affordable housing, two separate line items.
I'll second it.
Thanks.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott.
Our staff, in a, the conversation with Mr. Rossi, who is our lobbyist in, in Phoenix, he said that by having these placeholders, as Supervisor Gruhala has referred to them in our budget, that it might also help to enhance our eligibility for any state or federal funds for either of these two purposes. So, I think that's another, another reason that I'm supportive of the item.
Madam Chair, one question for clarification. Did the supervisors receive an inventory list of properties?
We was, we received a list of properties. I remember reading a memo, that could be.
Chair Bronson and Supervisor Christie, we, there, the full request was properties and available land. We met yesterday, and we're looking at, at finalizing that full report of not only the land, but buildings.
So, we have it received.
We had the buildings, I apologize.
We have not received the buildings, we have not received the land.
We did receive, didn't we receive the building?
I don't, Mr. DeBonis, do you recall which has been completed at this point?
So, Madam.
Well, we'll get another.
Yeah, Madam Chair, and, and members of the board, so the land inventory is being worked on, as well as the inventory of buildings, so we've not presented you with an official report. It sounds as though a preliminary list of building inventory may have been circulated. We'll track that down, make sure that all the board has whatever was previously provided, but understand that a comprehensive report of both land and buildings is forthcoming to the board.
And I don't know of any preliminary.
Thank you.
Circulation of any of that, but that's fine, but we, it's been established that we will be getting an inventory of both land and buildings. Thank you.
All right. We've got a motion and a second on the floor, and I don't think we called the vote yet. Okay, so, any objections?
I object.
One objection, Supervisor Christie. Any further objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Going to move quickly to item 20, and then we'll take a quick break after that. So, item 20 is under Community and Workforce Development Annual Action Plan and Resolution 2022-28. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing non-motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, may I just make a suggestion from items 21 through 30? I have not, no desire to poll any of them or discuss them, maybe the, the, we could check with, with the fellow supervisors and see if that's the case with them as well?
I have an issue with 21.
I have an issue with 21.
Okay.
Well, 22 through 30, well, 30, we've got to do, 29, 30, because they're hearings.
And we already did 25.
We already did 25. So, we're looking at items 22, 23.
24.
24, 26, 27, 28, which is Resolution 2022-30, 31, and then 28 is surplus property. I'll move those items.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to hearings, these franchise license and permits, 29 is a liquor license, 30 is fireworks permit, and always with the admonition that the fire department, the, the individual fire department is comfortable with the permit. There's no one in the audience, these are hearings, there's no one in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to these items at this time. I'll move those items and close the hearings.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objections, hearing non-motion carries. We'll take a break for about 10 minutes, and then resume with item 21.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I remember with Lewis.
Okay, I remember with Lewis. We're moving on to item. We're moving on to item 21, anti-racketeering revolving funds. Supervisor Garhova.
Yes, thank you. So my issue with this process, and I know that it's changed in a number of years, but my issue with this one is it's not really an open public process. You sort of have to know where the application is, you have to be able to kind of figure it out. And in this specific one, I just fundamentally had a hard time with the fact that it's not equitable access to being able to do these, access these anti-racketeering funds. So I had an issue with this at our last meeting, and then we got some clarification, and I still unfortunately have an issue. And the other issue for me was the 1,000 for 88 crime to rewards for anonymous reporters. They're anonymous, how are we going to fund?
Well, they're not really anonymous, but they...
Right. I'm like, um, how are we going to ensure that those funds are going to the right person? Right anonymous reporter. Yeah. So that was my issue there. I would be, if we want to separate them, or if there's a majority that wants to vote for it, that's fine, but I'll just...
Well, I actually have a problem with the 5,000 for University High. We've gotten a number of letters and emails that don't think this is a very equitable use of that. So I, again, how you make these decisions, but it's up to the majority of the board. I don't think I'm going to vote for this today, but these have questions, so...
Madam Chair, just as a former high school administrator, I have worked in two high schools, one in the Amphitheater School District, one in the Tucson Unified School District, that made use of these anti-racketeering revolving funds to fund, to help fund their grad nights. And let's remember why grad nights were started in the first place, because high school seniors across the country were not always making intelligent choices about their activities after their commencement ceremony. And kids were getting in drunk driving accidents or worse. And again, if it's a question of equity, I can speak to the experience of two different high schools that made use of these funds. And I think there, if you talk to administrators around the county, virtually any high school that has a grad night is aware of the availability of these racketeering funds. So I don't see it as a question of equity just based on that prior experience.
Chair Bronson?
Supervisor.
I do think, though, when you were looking at these funds, there was an application process that was pretty clear, and that has changed in the last three and four years. Because remember, there was a little issue with how the funds were spent, and so that's why they even come to the board in the first place. They didn't, that used to be able to be an administrative decision that was done before. So that, to me, is the issue. It's not so much that it's going specifically to this grad night. The only other thing that was a concern, and I forwarded to our county administrator and to our county attorney, is that the people that were attending this, the students have already paid for this. And so I guess I'm just wondering if that's refilling, like, the bucket for the next year? I don't know. I just, to me, it was more an access issue, and it's not as easy to find as it was a couple of years ago, because teen court used to utilize these funds as well.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Recognizing that the grad night has, of course, already occurred, every high school, every high school's grad night organization is something that is looking at its efforts over time. You are constantly, constantly cultivating parents of undergrads and sometimes even parents of middle school students to be your volunteer base. You are constantly trying to get donations from the businesses in your attendance area to support grad nights. So yes, University High School's grad night has already been held, just like all the other ones in the area have already been held. But all of these organizations at all of our high schools are ongoing concerns, and I'm certain that the grad night group at this high school is going to make use of those funds, not only to defray the expenses that they had from this year, but to help with their planning for all future years.
Next year's.
I'm sure. We'll have to agree to disagree.
Did you want to move?
Yeah, I will, out of respect for the concerns that both my colleagues have expressed, I will first move approval of the $5,000 for University High School Graduation Night.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any objections? One objection from me, oh, one from, two, two objections, Supervisor Garhova and Chair Bronson.
I think he's objected.
I can't hear him.
You're muted Supervisor Heinz.
Yeah, I also object.
Oh, he objected? So this is on University High, so motion fails by a vote of three against, and too far. So motion fails. We now move on to 88 crime. What's the pleasure of the board?
I will move that item as well. Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objections? No objections, just that the anonymous piece.
It was just mostly joking. It's okay.
All right. If there are no objections, motion carries. We have come to the end of the regular agenda. Then let's move on to the addendum agenda. Item number one, Resolution 2022-32, Supervisor Garhova.
Yes, thank you. So we had two speakers that spoke on the issue, and I just wanted to summarize that Hud Bay is a Canadian company, has been trying to mine in the Santa Rita Mountains for years. Just a few weeks ago, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals upheld a verdict saying that Rosemont Copper Company, a subsidiary of Hud Bay, cannot mine in the U.S. forest land on the east side of the Santa Rita Mountains. In the meantime, Hud Bay's Rosemont subsidiary has already started clearing land it owns on the west side of the Santa Rita's without a Clean Water Act permit for a project it calls Copper World. They plan to create a system of up to five open pit mines. The Santa Rita's are sacred to the indigenous communities who have been on this land since time immemorial. These mountains are considered skylands and vital habitat to many plants and animals, including some that are endangered, such as the jaguar. Mining is a water-intensive activity that will tax and pollute our precious water supply. The work Hud Bay has already, I'm sorry, the work Hud Bay has already disturbed washes that are critical to the desert ecosystem. Every step in the mining process causes greenhouse gas emissions and contributes to climate change. So the profit from the mine will not stay in Pima County, since that has been one of the concerns, like, it brings jobs. The profits don't stay here, since Hud Bay isn't local. Our natural landscape is one of our greatest assets, and we can't afford to lose it. That's why we're bringing this resolution forward opposing Copper World. And then once, if the resolution is passed, then we'll be sure to forward it to all of our representatives in Congress and Senate.
So you're moving?
Yes, please, I'd like to...
I second. Motion and a second to approve Resolution 2022-32. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott.
And just a question of clarification. It was indicated Supervisor Garhova that we were going to send copies of the resolution, if it's passed, to our federal representatives. My understanding, specific to Copper World, is that they don't have to apply for any kind of federal permits, they do have to apply for state permits.
Correct.
So could you...
Oh, if you look at item two in the resolution, it says that we were going to direct county administrator and staff, as federal, state, and local authorities, to allow, like, to allow, to provide information as needed to document the county's continuing concerns, take all necessary measures to protect the health, take all necessary measures to protect the health, safety, and welfare of everyone, and then make sure to take necessary measures to protect county conservation lands, and that would include opposing all of these permits.
Thank you Supervisor. And then, Madam Chair, I had a question for Ms. Lesher. Ms. Lesher, my understanding is that representatives from Hud Bay have been in communication recently with representatives from the Flood Control District. Is there anything that you can share with the board about their interactions, either with Flood or other county departments?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Scott, I'm going to ask Mr. DeBones to respond, if you please. Thank you.
Okay.
Ooh.
All right, hot mic. Chair Supervisors.
Yeah, it's a hot mic.
Chair Supervisors, I do not have an update on those conversations. I know they've been ongoing interactions. We will ask Suzanne Shields, our Flood Control Director, to provide an update memorandum and forward that to the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
This is the third resolution that I've been around against Rosemont and Hud Bay. It again shows that there is absolutely no effect of the Board of Supervisors resolutions. The final ultimate end of this whole saga rests in 18 different departments in Washington, D.C., and all the courts do is delay it. So three times we've made this resolution, Hud Bay is still here, and Hud Bay is not leaving, and the Board of Supervisors does not have a say in this, and Copper World is on private property. And that is the key element of why, while the Rosemont Mine was tied up in the courts, Hud Bay did what all mining experts do, and that is look for other areas on their property to find minerals, to mine. And they did just that, and they found Copper World is probably more beneficial to mining than the original Rosemont Mine. So I guess that interim, while they were in the courts and Rosemont was on hold, it gave Hud Bay the opportunity to go look for more mine on their own property, private property. Most recently, the pair of lawsuits by three nations against Hud Bay were thrown out. The next time in court, the litigious and extreme environmentalists may win there, and then it'll go back the other way. But time and court opportunities are running out, and Hud Bay will prevail, especially since the discovery of Copper World. Mining is in the heart and soul of southern Arizona. We have a modern and much-needed economic development opportunity that we have been slapping around like a pinata. And Pima County needs jobs. So I will vote against this resolution, and I will definitely continue my fervent support for mining in Arizona, for mining in southern Arizona, and for mining in the Santa Rita's in Copper World. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Christie. Any other discussion? I'll call a question, objections?
I object.
One objection, any further objections? Hearing non. Motion carries four to one with Supervisor Christie objecting. Moving on to item two, COVID-19 premium pay. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. During the last Board of Supervisors meeting on May 17th, we discussed an agenda item pertaining to COVID-19 premium payments that were made to select Pima County employees from April through June of 2021, ranging from $2,500 to $5,200, and that such payments did not require the approval of the Board of Supervisors. Suddenly during that discussion, it was announced that the Board of Supervisors had indeed approved COVID-19 premium payments at an April 9, 2020 meeting. It was further represented that the board approval of these payments were of the same fashion and manner as the $2,500 to $5,200 premium payments being discussed. Upon inspection, it was not. Reviewing the minutes of the April 9, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting, it was found that while Mr. Huckleberry's request dealt with premium pay, it stated a finite amount of money for a finite period of time. The finite amount of money was at the rate of $2 per hour COVID-19 premium pay, also known as hazard pay, as an acknowledgement of those county employees who could not practice social distancing and/or were unable to obtain adequate PPE.
known as hazard pay, as an acknowledgement of those county employees who could not practice social distancing and/or were unable to obtain adequate PPE. The finite period of time was April to June of 2020. This item was turned in those meetings' minutes as, quote, "temporary COVID-19 premium pay." This temporary increase, which I am proud that I voted for, does not even come close to the pertinent issue of the highly selective COVID-19 premium pay amounts of $2,500 to $5,200 that was being discussed during the last Board of Supervisors' meeting, yet it was announced and represented as such. So, in 2020, the Board of Supervisors voted on the $2 per hour hazard pay. In 2021, the Board of Supervisors voted on the employee vaccination incentive of $300. Today, the Board of Supervisors is being asked to vote on a $50 stipend to poll workers who are vaccinated. My questions. Why didn't the Board of Supervisors vote on the $2,500 to $5,200 COVID-19 premium payments? And the overriding question is, what other COVID-19 premium payments have been made that the Board of Supervisors did not vote on?
Ms. Lesher. Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I think if you go on April 9 of 2020, when the board looked at what the policy would be, and Mr. Huckleberry at that time in the notes that you've provided, indicated the board would need to take action. That's the day that the board approved, as you know, Board Policy C29. And it is in that policy that included Section 7, in which temporary COVID premium pay then included a process which noted that appointing authorities are required to identify positions and request county administrator approval. So, on that date in April of 2020, it is my understanding, and what the record shows in the minutes, that the board approved a process by which appointing authorities or directors could then request of the county administrator premium pay. That policy came back to the board after that first date, some, I believe, eight or nine times over subsequent months, as sections of it were amended, extended. When we first brought, in April of 2020, I believe, there was an understanding that perhaps the pandemic would end within 30 days. Obviously, it did not, and that we came back to the board for the continuation of other issues that related to that premium pay. What I know, and what the record shows, is the number of times that the board affirmed or took action again, or looked at the Board Policy C29 that allowed the county administrator to make determinations. Under that, again, as we've mentioned, some $2,500 employees in some 37 different departments received pay following the determination and the process established by the board.
So, all of that was brought before the board. Why wasn't the $2,500 to $5,200 COVID-19 premium payments to that select group of county employees? Why wasn't that brought to the board?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, again, I'm going to make an assumption for what the county administrator and you were doing at that time, but I believe that, again, under the policy approved by the board, there is a process by which dollars can be requested by appointing authorities and can be approved by the county administrator. And that is how and why those dollars were approved in accordance with board policy.
So, some of the board policy included board approval, and other board policies did not require approval?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, board policy indicated that, board policy designated the county administrator as the individual who would approve those dollar payments. And that's, again, in accordance with board policy.
There wouldn't have to come back to the board as a separate item for approval.
That is correct.
Then, at what particular juncture, then, can the board be brought into the loop on any kind of COVID premium payments in the future?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, the board is, I would encourage the board to look at Board Policy C29 and offer any recommendations for suggestions, amendments, clarifications, additional processes that we can take.
Then, I don't understand why we even had to vote on any of these items at all.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I'm not sure what you're asking about needed to be voted on. You voted on the policy.
The $2 per hour hazard pay, we voted on the employee vaccination incentive, and today we're going to be voting on a vaccination stipend to poll workers. Those are all COVID-related, and they're all bonuses and premium pay.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, they are, the additional, the amount that related to insurance premiums and those stipends were seen as different than additional premium pay. It was identified in the action that came to the board at that time as separate and apart from the premium pay, but were simply allocations related to, or funding related to the exact, the vaccine allocation. It was not part of this policy.
What it looks like is that there was a method of cherry picking which COVID premium payments were going to be brought before the board. And I think that's the problem. And that's the issue. This one with the closely-held 19 employees that received anywhere from $2,500 to $5,200, that was not brought to the board, but a number of other ones were. And you just mentioned that it was 3,200 employees have received some sort of premium payment?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, no. I said approximately 2,500 in 37 departments received some pay over a period of time, as what was clear, as people, I know we've seen letters coming in, why not the Sheriff's Department? They received that pay. The process that you determined as a board allowed for appointing authorities or directors of departments to receive permission of the board, of the chairman, of the county administrator. That is what occurred. There was a determination by the county administrator at the time, or the board, that incentives for vaccine were separate and apart from the, from premium pay. If you have conversations about what the board at that time was thinking, or with that county administrator, I am not privileged to those discussions.
Can you understand the frustration that taxpayers have when they see these types of things? And it was not, some were brought before the board, others weren't. Some were classified as premium pay, others were vaccine pay. People are getting extra money here at basically the direction of county administration without any notification that this is happening. I don't recall seeing any list of 2,500 employees that received, what kind of pay did they receive?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, you allocated that direction to the county administrator. If that is something the board would like to see, who received what, happy to provide that. It was all done.
I would very much like to see that, and I think the public would be too. But what I hear from you is that this was your predecessor's decision.
No, it was the board's decision.
Thank you.
Is that correct?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, the board made the determination in conjunction with the county administrator to provide additional pay related to, or bonus, if you will, in order to encourage people to be vaccinated.
And you're saying that that permission by the board? Excuse me. That permission by the board for the county administrator to determine that was done back on April of 2020?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, again, I said that policy initially came to the board in April of 2020. It came back to the board, that policy, it is the temporary COVID policy, so it was amended at various times along the way. It came back to the board, I believe, eight or nine times over the next year or so for review by the board.
And approval.
Well, at this point, I would like very much to see that list that you offered to provide.
Thank you.
And I have no further questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Scott.
Madam Chair.
Chair Bronson.
I looked up the policy while we were talking. It is Board of Supervisors' Policy C2.9.
Right.
It was adopted April 9, 2020, and then was revised April 21, May 21, July 7, August 17, December 15, all of 2020. Was also revised March 2, April 6, and June 22 of 2021. And again, it is Board of Supervisors' Policy C2.9, and it says, "This temporary policy is to outline and implement the newly enacted federal provisions, as well as provide additional county guidelines and address workplace expectations for employees." That's just the first sentence under the policy. It is a 12-page, it is a 12-page policy. But yeah, it was initially passed by the board in April 2020.
And, yeah, and amended several times by the board?
Yes.
Number of times? More than two?
Yeah, that's clear.
All right. Any further?
Chair Bronson.
Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you, sorry. So, I just think it's really important for us to point out that, that in looking up the records myself, Supervisor Christie voted for this policy. So, I don't know why we have to review this. You should read what you vote for, and if you have questions, take it up with the administrator. But please stop wasting the board's time for political purposes Supervisor.
Well, thank you for that advice Supervisor Heinz. I just have to say, I find it very apparent that my four colleagues want this issue to go away. They don't want me asking these questions. They don't like to be here when I am asking those questions, and for some reason, it's making my four colleagues upset and uncomfortable. I'm sorry. I'm just asking questions, and I think I have a right to. And if my colleagues don't like this subject, I can't help that. But I'm going to pursue this because it doesn't fit what I remember, or what is the expectation.
Well, then, look at the minutes.
Okay. I'll look at the minutes. I'll do everything you say, but I'm not going to stop asking questions. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
The same questions that you get the same answers to every time you bring it up. I would think that at some point, you might want to reconsider.
Well, I know you don't like me asking these questions. You want it to go away.
I don't care whether you ask the questions, but I think you have to ask them and understand factually what happened, and that's my concern.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott.
Supervisor Christie, I have no objection to any of my colleagues asking questions on any subject. I was merely citing the policy that was passed by the board back in 2020 and referring to it so that you could look at it later. It is a pretty lengthy, lengthy policy, but it has been addressed by the previous board more than once, and by this board more than once. My only objection, when you have raised these concerns, I raised at the last meeting when I felt that some of your comments were not fair to employees who were, who, as you've said many times, have not done anything illegal or wrong, but were acting based on the direction of their supervisor. That was the only objection I've ever registered. So, you know, please don't paint with a broad brush and say that all four of us have the same concerns, we're all four individuals with different concerns.
Thank you Supervisor. Any further discussion of this item? All right, then, let's move on to Small Business Commission, item three. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you recall, the Small Business Commission was one of the only commissions, if not the only commission, that was described and delegated as an essential commission to be operating during COVID. And they were given authorization to continue their commission's efforts and findings during the COVID crisis, and also the effects of what COVID had, and our board decisions on the small business community. And since then, they've been meeting regularly, and at this particular point, they've come up with a plan that I think has a great deal of merit. I would suggest that if this plan goes through, that ARPA funds could subsidize the costs related to the plan, which we have representatives of the commission here. But ARPA funds would be appropriate, because obviously this is pandemic-related, and it is not one of these grants that is going to have to go on and on and on. It's a one-time grant for the funding, and it won't be available as an ongoing program. So, at this particular time, we have two representatives of the commission, of which all of the supervisors appoint two people from their district to this commission. They meet regularly, they do a lot of deep and intricate work, and they've spent a lot of time, effort, and energy. And this commission, I think, has great merit, particularly when we were talking earlier about the city and county working on a poverty study. This could be certainly incorporated in that. So, at this time, Madam Chair, I'd like to have Kent Blumenthal and Josh Jacobson make a quick presentation and answer questions regarding this particular item.
Welcome.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Kent Blumenthal, the immediate past chair of the Pima County Small Business Commission, and I'm here with my friend, colleague, and fellow Commissioner Josh Jacobson. The chair of the commission, Carlos Ruiz, had to leave because he has a business to run, and so he asked that we step up and speak to this proposal that came through our commission to the Board of Supervisors and address any questions that you may have. The proposal to establish a task force to review Pima County's response to the COVID-19 pandemic on small businesses, economic activity, health, and education, first germinated in October of 2020 at a Small Business Commission, which was in the midst, if not depths, of the COVID-19 pandemic. This was pre-vaccines and the like, when we first brought up the notion and advised the Board of Supervisors that they may entertain some public feedback as to the efforts that were being undertaken by the county. I want to acknowledge, and it's important to acknowledge, on behalf of the commission, that we appreciate very much that the Board of Supervisors, then and since, and the county administration, has taken actions in order to help the residents of this county, the small businesses in this county, education in this county, and the economic activity of this county. Having said that, that we believe strongly, for any government entity, including Pima County, any business operation will undertake a review and an assessment of what has been done in any particular exigency, or necessity, or program, or project that was not regular and occurring, to see what went right, what went wrong, how things might be improved in the future. In fact, there's three reasons why, for the county, the benefit of our citizens, our residents, that this proposal ought to go forward. One is to make, I'll call it mid-course corrections, in how we approach the health and welfare of the county, to do the best we can, acknowledge the good, acknowledge what can be improved upon. Secondly, to identify those best practices that came out of the response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And third, to hope for the best, but prepare for the worst should a similar county, national, international exigencies such as the COVID-19 pandemic take place. So, what we've recommended is a task force that would be broadly represented. You may ask, well, how is it the Small Business Commission is intent to make a proposal that addresses education, other economic activity, and health and wellness? Well, we, the small businesses are not an island. We are an integrated component of everything that happens right in this county. And it touches on education, it touches on jobs and job training, it touches on job retention and the like. It touches on... and job training. It touches on job retention and the like. It touches on the health and wellness of the employees and the employers. And most significantly, going into the future, it touches on our well-being. Do we have the right anecdotes and ideas going forward that are going to raise a tide that will raise all ships in this county? Last comment before I'm going to ask fellow Commissioner Jacobson to, if he'd like to speak or say something. One of major, a significant read I had, and I'm an amateur student of American history, was General Colin Powell. And he wrote in his book of his memoirs of leadership. He said, "No battle plan survives contact with the enemy." No battle plan survives contact with the enemy. If I asked you, who is the enemy in COVID-19, you'd say to me, oh, COVID-19. Right? So as we addressed it, as we fought against it, we changed our plans, we did the best we can, and then you do an after-action report. How did it work? How did it go? Okay? This is no different than any major corporation would do. This is no different than any government would do. And looking back, unfortunately, these things happen when things usually go wrong in our communities and not right. Right? There was a Kerner Commission, the federal government, the Warner Commission after assassination of President Kennedy. We have, we're asking for, if you will, a task force, a commission now, with your blessings, that would look and see the best of all you did and those things that we can improve so we can be the leader and the light in this county, in this state, and throughout the country. Commissioner Jacobson, comments?
I don't know what else to say, Kent. You really covered a lot of it.
Yeah, he's a natural speaker.
He is. And he's been a great asset to the Small Business Commission. I want to make that very clear. You know, I can't believe it's, you know, been about two years since we were in this room discussing proclamations and curfews and mandates. That seemed like a million years ago. Some of the data that we've been tracking on the Small Business Commission is, where is Pima County in relation to economic recovery and the rest of the state? So Pima County is still about 83% recovered in terms of jobs. The rest of the state, the average is about 109%. Why is that? Why have we not ramped out of this? We've discussed a lot of this on the Small Business Commission. A lot of it has to do with the type of jobs and opportunity that we have here in Pima County. Now, we need to look at everything that we did to make sure, because Chair Bronson, you remember when I brought this up to you a while ago with Dr. Cohen, we know that the next pandemic is right around the corner. That's exactly what Dr. Cohen said. So we want to make sure that we're ready. And just looking at this report and even the earlier agenda item today, this task force, we feel, lays out a foundation and a framework to actually accomplish a lot of the talking points and studies that were on Agenda Item Number 15 earlier today. This will cover that. When we're talking about economic activity, health, for Supervisor Heinz, that's something that's very important to him, obviously. We've got, fentanyl has skyrocketed in the last couple of years. We need to look at that. We need to look at the comorbidities in our population. Housing, housing has been very affected. That's something that Supervisor Rahalva is very concerned about. And education, we've had school boards throughout the county that have done a lot of different things. They've acted in their own ways. And all of that has affected me as a father and as an employer, trying to keep people coming to work and anticipate what we're going to have to do to have people showing up. When we're talking about poverty, I want to mention that Tucson is still 19.5% below the national average for median incomes. We need to figure out why. And we believe that this task force will bring a lot of that data to light so that we can actually create economic activity coming out of the pandemic and know what to do right next time.
Thank you. And just a quick question for Ms. Lesher. You're suggesting, the Small Business Commission is suggesting we use ARPA funds. Would that be available? I do not know the answer. And I know better than to ask a question that I don't know the answer to, so.
Chairman Bronson, this board has developed a spending plan for all of the ARPA funds. If it is the direction and the like of this board, we're certainly able to come back and provide recommendations to you about how we might reallocate dollars that you have already designated for the reuse of this purpose.
Thank you.
Chair Bronson, question, how did you come up with the $775,000 price tag?
Sure, go for it.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Rahalva, thank you for the question. First, you have to imagine that the commission is made up of small business owners. So they're looking at the cost benefits and what things cost. So as we developed the proposal and then debated it, discussed it for the workforce, a task force, we talked about the various elements and we identified some basic principles that led to the pricing. First was that there would be a representative commission or task force, and that's outlined in the proposal, with people from education, so forth. The other part was that it was 100% apolitical and more importantly, independent, so that under the guise of the workforce, there would be a consultant hired that would address the various variables or data points within the proposal. Now, we're, we have some hubris here, and we don't expect to have captured every element that ought to be reviewed or considered. That's where the task force would come in and identify those things. Now, as far as the pricing goes, the end game is, that was our best thoughts given the corpus of the proposal as we envisioned it and broader than small business, as I explained. However, as the business of the county goes forward, one would imagine that an RFP would be put together, overseen by the task force. And in that RFP, the dollars would be assigned, and then it would go out for consulting firms to see who might bid on it to come back. So we didn't expect the numbers to go beyond what we put in here. It may be less. Does that address the question, how we came to that?
Yeah, I think it sounds like you just sort of.
Supervisor Rahalva.
Like, you know, I think all of you sort of have an idea of what consultants might cost and, you know, the length of the process and how many hours. I mean, I'm guessing that that's some of it. It just is a higher price tag, considering that some of the health-related information, like on item two, that we have already. So I was just kind of wondering how we went through that. And I'm sorry, did you want to add something?
I was just going to say, in the business community, you may have heard this. We have an acronym. It's called a WAG. And if you don't know what that is, I can tell you later, a W A G. But realistically, we also took a page out of County Administrator Lesher's playbook and said up to, you know. And also looking at other expenditures that this board has been willing to put out, for instance, the $800,000 for the Virgin Pulse website that will benefit county employees, where this $775,000 should benefit the entire county. We thought that you guys would be willing to make that investment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions, please, Chair?
Madam Chair, as you can see, they've worked very diligently on this and I think made sure no stone was left unturned. And this is not a new idea. When was this first generated, roughly?
October 2020, our commission had a notion, had discussions about wanting to have a look back as to whatever activities were in effect and how effective and what the efficacy was.
And I don't mean to put you through a rigorous trial here, but can you name all of the commissioners?
I probably could.
Just so we know that all the supervisors have appointed them and that they are part of this board.
We do have a couple of vacancies at this time, understand, but here we go. We have Chair Carlos Ruiz. We have Vice Chair.
Ken Goodman?
No, no.
Janay Arenas?
Janay Arenas. You have Blumenthal. And I was appointed by, actually Supervisor Ray Carroll and am tolerated by Supervisor Steve Christie. We serve at their pleasure. So that's why I say that. Josh Jacobson, who is our, was not appointed by supervisors. He was voted on by the commission. He's our only out-large position. We have Commissioner Gabriel David, who serves at the pleasure of Chair Bronson. We have.
Shelby Collier?
Shelby Collier. And I don't know what district who appointed, maybe perhaps.
I appointed Ms. Arenas and Mr. Collier.
All right, very good. And then former Chair affectionately referred to as Chair Emeritus Ken Goodman, who serves at the pleasure of Supervisor Rahalva. And.
Raoul Aguirre?
And Raoul Aguirre also is from your district, District Five. So I think I covered all who are in there at this time.
That was pretty good.
Not too shabby without notes.
I appreciate the presentation and all of your hard work, and thank you. And I have no further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, thank you so much. It was an honor. Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I'd like to move that the Small Business Commission, the COVID-19 Pandemic Response Task Force, as presented, be approved by this board with the funding mechanisms to be determined by the county administrator and that they be allowed to move forward with their commission.
Madam Chair, I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Supervisor Scott.
Supervisor Christie, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
I wanted to second it for discussion purposes, not only because Mr. Blumenthal and Mr. Jacobson endured four hours of our meeting before we got to this item, but also because there were some points that I wanted to make and also some direction that I wanted to ask of Ms. Lesher. I really feel that the Small Business Commission has raised a great many issues of concern to this entire community that are relevant and that need to be discussed. And as I said, when I came and spoke to the commission, and I appreciated the invitation, it is important for people to be reflective. And it's not only important for people to be reflective, it's important for organizations and governments to be reflective. And I think that the board should be open to any and all input that we get about how our decisions during the pandemic, whether they were decisions that we had to make solely of our own volition or decisions that we had to make because we are a subdivision of state government or because we serve in a federal system or sometimes you get direction from Washington. I do think it's important that we be reflective and that we take any and all input from the small business community, from the K-12 community, from the higher ed community, from everybody. Because as Mr. Blumenthal said, no battle plan survives the enemy. And I think it's for us to be able to handle the next pandemic. And Mr. Jacobson is right, there may be one down the road, maybe sooner than any of us hope. We should be reflective on what we've done, both positive and what we might revise in the future. I don't, however, feel that we need a task force, as it was described and crafted by the Small Business Commission, to provide us that data. I feel that the Small Business Commission members already have the capacity and certainly the interest to collect and collate that information from Pima County staff, from K-12 districts, from higher ed representatives, certainly from business organizations, whether they be chambers of commerce or any other organization that speaks on behalf of small business. I think it is within the capacity of the Small Business Commission to have hearings and open meetings and get that kind of input and share it with the board. I am concerned with the potential expenditure of close to $800,000 that is called for in this proposal, up to $775,000, to use Mr. Blumenthal's verbiage. And I don't think, just, and this is reflective of comments that I made when we were talking about the task force that Supervisor Heinz wanted us to form in conjunction with the city of Tucson. I think we already have the capacity to get all of this information. We don't need a special task force to do it. So I'm very open to getting any kind of input, information that the Small Business Commission already has or wants to collect and provide to the board. I'd encourage them to use their liaison with county staff, Mr. Kavanaugh, to request any information that they want in terms of county data. They certainly will find a lot of people in the K-12 districts who have data available to them. I would encourage them to contact the information officers of the K-12 districts to get that kind of data. So I'm not going to be able to support the creation of the task force, but I definitely am interested in any and all input that the Small Business Commission itself may want to collect. Having said that, Madam Chair, this is the direction that I'd like to provide to Ms. Lesher and her team. Mr. Blumenthal and Mr. Jacobson went through the roster of Small Business Commission members. And my staff and I have heard from one of our appointees on a frequent basis that they are not always sure what the exact mission and focus of the commission is. And Supervisor Heinz, Supervisor Rahalva, and I have only been on the board for a year and a half. What I would like from Ms. Lesher is some background information on the Small Business Commission, why it was formed, what its original mission and focus was. And I'd also like there to be some assignment of staff, perhaps, to assist Mr. Kavanaugh with working with the Small Business Commission so that their mission and focus and duties are more broadly defined, not just for the board, but for them as well. I hope that was clear, Ms. Lesher.
Chair Bronson and Supervisor Scott, to see if I have some clarity, I've heard a couple of things. One is, what is it that we need to be doing as a county to do what I think of as the hot wash following any kind of situation has occurred? Many of us have commented throughout the pandemic that occasionally people felt we were making rules up as we went along, and it was because we were making rules up as we went along. And the opportunity to have any group come in and evaluate how we handle the pandemic, what we did, what we learned from it, to inform better practices as we go forward would be greatly welcomed. The question, so great compliments to this, the paper that is before us. What I then hear is perhaps, how do we get that done? And so perhaps another piece of that is to let us go back and look at and reevaluate the Business Commission, Small Business Commission, what is its intent, how is it staffed, does it have the resources it needs, et cetera. But what I'm wondering is if we're doing both of those activities, is there an opportunity for us to potentially combine the two in some way and allow us an opportunity to go back and have some meetings with Mr. Jacobson, with Mr. Blumenthal, others from the commission, and say, as we review your commission, or the Small Business Task Force, or the Small Business Commission, and we're looking at. or the Small Business Task Force, or the Small Business Commission, and we're looking at that, can it complement the things you want to do? Is it the additional staff that you need in order to get the study done? What are elements of the staff that we might be able to split off? Are there things that the state could inform by the data on some of the health? And then find a way, if we need to, to come back to the board and say, we still believe that there's additional resources necessary to take a portion of what we're looking at of the task force that perhaps could not be accomplished by the commission, and we need to bring that forward and come back with the full proposal, with some dollars that we might be assigned to it, to enhance the wag, and see how we can put that back together. So I guess what I'd look, what I'd suggest is, if we could direct staff to work with the commission, to look at this proposal in front of us, to look at the future of the commission, and see what are the elements of this we need to not only ensure we have a Small Business Commission that meets the needs of the community, but that we have a full study of how we responded to the pandemic, and what are our teachable moments to inform how we respond to situations such as this in the future.
Madam Chair, I appreciate that Ms. Lesher has not only incorporated my more general requests about the commission overall. With the proposal that Mr. Blumenthal and Mr. Jacobson presented to us, I think that that's a holistic way of moving forward, and it's also not only going to give the board some clear information, but I think it's also very respectful of the time and commitment that Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Blumenthal, and their colleagues have clearly made. So, thank you, Ms. Lesher. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I think the whole purpose of what the commission's mission is, is to be independent, particularly independent of county administration, as far as providing information to the commission. The optics of having the county determine and to give numbers and statistics, I think, is the, is not going to give the sense of security in the public that this is an independent, self-sustaining commission, and that it needs to maintain a high degree of independence. I think this is why the commission has decided that it needs to get outside consultants who can give an unbiased, unfettered, clear view of the situation that the commission wants to pursue. If the commission is merely getting information fed to them from the county, that leaves a lot of skepticism if the commission is getting the true and factual information. I think in the past, and I'm sure the commissioners can correct me if I'm wrong, and it will correct me if I'm wrong, there's been a feeling on the commission's side, the commissioner's side, that the county, the administration, has consistently ignored the mission and the decisions and the directions and the requests of the Small Business Commission. My colleague Supervisor Scott talked about acknowledging their commitment, the commission's commitment to this program. I think by not allowing them that free rein to have the ability to get the consultants and the aide separate and removed from the county does them a disservice. And it basically says, you're doing a pretty good job. We like the idea, but we want the county's hand in this. Maybe so the numbers you get don't jive with what we want. That connection is too close. So if there is a way we can keep the task force in its place as presented, and maybe talk a little bit about the amounts of money that the task force is requiring, it would give that independence and free rein away from the county administration and county staff to allow them to pursue what they want to find out, and what they want to compile in a very independent and fair-minded, untainted condition.
Chair Bronson.
Supervisor Grahava.
So, in looking over the resolution, and I want to make sure that there hasn't been a revision. It was adopted March 18, 2003, to create the commission. Does that sound right? Okay. So, has there been an evaluation of the commission by the staff, or vice versa, as far as making sure, you know, Supervisor Christie brought up a concern that the members, some members of the commission haven't felt like their voices were heard. And so, part of, I think, right here in the resolution, it says that there's going to be an evaluation of the commission by Pima County staff to substantiate the need and the interests of the county. And I do think that a lot, any good evaluation is going to have a reciprocal end, where it's like, so where is the disconnect? Because my understanding of most commissions is that you're created in order to help inform, because you're the content experts in small business. So you're here to inform the county. And my concern is when we're talking about supporting and having an unbiased, it really is speaking to the fact that there has been some breakdown of trust, that there has been a sense on both sides that it's like you're working independent. And really, you're supposed to be informing our decisions when it comes to business, and small business in Pima County. And so I do think that there, we have an opportunity here, since this item came up, for us to really look at this evaluation. How is it that the Small Business Commission is helping to inform policies and decisions of Pima County? And how is it that Pima County is utilizing the expertise on this commission in order to inform that? Because usually, when you have commissions or committees that do want to do some sort of independent study, it really speaks to, we're not really communicating very well, in my opinion. And one of the other issues is part of the same resolution, and I know, I think it was read at your meeting, but, you know, with the exception of appropriate staffing is determined by the county administrator, financial support for the commission will not be provided or solicited from Pima County, that it's coming from Pima County. I think that there's a lot of merit in some of the areas in trying to consolidate in one sort of big report what the impacts of COVID have been. And I want to make sure that there, when we're looking at this, that we're not trying to lay blame. It really is, what did we do? And what won't we do again? And what should we expand upon? And there's a lot of lessons, I think, that we can learn. And this is not something that is specific to the Small Business Commission. And I do think that a lot of the information that is being requested from higher education and K-12 and all of the COVID information, that's information that we have available. We probably don't have it in some easy-to-understand way. But I do think that utilizing, because this is an interest of the Small Business Commission, utilizing their expertise when it comes to business-related data makes a lot of sense. I just think that the fact that you brought this forward sort of highlights to me that there's a disconnect between the commission and the county, and something that I think we need to rectify.
Thank you, Supervisor Grahava. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, could just, there be a possibility for response by the commissioners to our discussion?
Chair Bronson.
Well, did Ken, did you want to respond?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisors. Thank you for that discussion, those comments. There's a couple of things of note that I don't have to refer to the enabling legislation of 2003, or the follow-up addendum resolution, I believe it was 2014. And that is, is that the Small Business Commission has two objectives. Objective one is to advise the Board of Supervisors. That's all we can do, is advise you. Hence, this recommendation is advising that if we were you, we would do it. Secondly, is to communicate with small businesses. What we can't do, and Supervisor Grahava, you read this in the ordinance, we cannot ask for one dime for ourselves, for the commission, to do anything. The scope of work we're talking about of the, we have a total of 11 commissioners when every seat is filled. They're all full-time business owners or managers. We volunteer in those positions without compensation because we're glad to be able to contribute to the betterment of the county. And we have zero resources ourself to collect the kind of information and data, and gather it, and analyze it, and so forth, and put it into some representation to you. That's beyond our means. And we can't ask for a dime to assist us in that, according to your own rules and regulations. So that's important to note. The county has fabulous staff, beginning with the county administrator and down. We know that. But Supervisor Christie did bring up a point that came up within the commission's discussion. An independent panel, whatever you call it, a work team, or whatever, to oversee the collection of data and information, and the providing their recommendations and conclusions to the county is something that's beyond our means, within the means of the county, but also would expedite and keep an air of independence with a consultancy to assist. So, thank you for allowing to share.
Thank you.
If I may just briefly add to that, you know, this is really meant to be a framework, not just for this Board of Supervisors, but the Board of Supervisors to come. You know, County Administrator Lesher said a few meetings ago that something like the wall of shame would never happen again. And as much as I agree with her, there could be a Board of Supervisors that come by in a term or two that would be able to make that decision. And so we really want to use this project, which is enormous in scope. It's, you know, frankly, Supervisor Scott, it's way too big for us to handle. And, believe me, you don't want a fried chicken salesman doing the analysis that stays sane by going to the gym. Because my version of what's happened would be, you know, not impartial, like Commissioner Blumenthal was saying. And that's really where the third party comes from. And I heard County Administrator Lesher even saying that there's some value into that, into having somebody else look into this, so that we can see the best and not make the mistakes.
Thank you.
And I would just add, Madam Chair, this could not be more appropriate to use ARPA funds for.
Thank you. Supervisor Hines, I think you had something.
Oh, thank you. I was actually going to make a substitute motion that we direct the county administrator and staff to conduct a comprehensive analysis of the county's pandemic response, including health outcomes, as well as economic outcomes, using, if necessary, outside consultants to make it more independent, if that is what she feels is necessary, and that they bring that back to the board.
Okay, there's been a substitute motion. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. We're back to the original motion. A roll call vote.
Madam Chair, just before we go to the vote, I think Supervisor Hines, a lot of what you just said in that motion, Ms. Lesher is going to address through the direction that I gave her earlier. And I think she also, Mr. Jacobson, was responsive to some of the concerns that you just raised with some of the additional input that she's going to share with both the board and the commission. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott. Roll call.
Okay, so, the roll calls to approve the formation of a COVID-19 Response Task Force as presented, and for funding to be with ARPA funds.
Correct.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Grahava?
No.
Supervisor Hines?
He's left, I think.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Chair Bronson?
No. Motion fails. And staff has direction. Okay, let's move on to Item 4, Recommendations for Election Workers and COVID-19 Vaccine Mandates. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I'll move the item for discussion purposes.
I'll second.
Motion and a second.
Madam Chair, if you look at the, well, first of all, the reason this is being discussed is because the county administrator had a policy that new hires had to be vaccinated for COVID-19. This board affirmed that policy. Election workers would be new hires. So what we're being asked to do is to waive that requirement for temporary election workers. I am fine with all of these conditions, except for the second one. The second one says, between 36 and 24 hours prior to the scheduled start time, election workers shall provide proof of a negative test for COVID-19. Now, look at the item right above that. There are 10 symptoms: cough, runny nose, headaches, and seven others. If you're showing any of those symptoms, you got some kind of illness. It might be COVID. Please don't show up to work. However, COVID tests can often produce false negatives. I have had that experience myself. I was symptomatic. I took at-home COVID tests. In fact, I took two in a row, just to be sure. Both of them were negative. However, the next day, I took a PCR test, which is a much more sensitive and accurate test through a local pharmacy, and I tested positive. If I had been one of these election workers, and I'm presenting you evidence of my negative test, it would have been a false negative. So I think having that, I cannot vote for this item if that second bullet stays in there. So, I would like to remove that.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
And just to kind of point another element of what Supervisor Scott said, you could have all these symptoms and still not have COVID. So, as you point out, if you have these symptoms, don't come to the poll.
You got something.
Yeah. So I would.
It's transmissible.
I would agree with removing that bullet point, as I would also like to remove the $50 stipend that will be offered to vaccinated election workers for whom the county can validate vaccination status. Another, this is, I guess, another COVID premium payment. But what I don't like is the discriminatory element of it, that some will benefit over others. This is not a situation where we're judging people as far as being better, or healthier, or anything of that nature. And it's, I think, a not wise way to spend taxpayer money. And I think it sends the wrong message to what we're trying to accomplish here, which is a fair and equitable balance between poll workers. Of course, this whole issue that I think became important to be brought before the board was that the politics of it, that some political affiliations would stay away if they had to have the vaccination mandate. And consequently, we lost the ability to have enough poll workers. So, we've removed that. And I think, in order to make it full, we need to remove the $50 stipend for those who are vaccinated. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would support that. I would amend my motion to approve the item with the removal of the second and the sixth bulleted items.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion?
Chair Bronson.
Supervisor Grahava.
This is one of those issues where I have a real, it's a difficult vote for me either way, because I can probably effectively argue both sides. One, it's important that we have voting centers that are accessible. We had a big discussion about where they go. And my concern is we don't have enough of probably, it looks like one party, in order to make sure that we can fully realize all of our voting centers. So I want to make sure we can do that. On the other hand, we're encouraging people to come into locations where we can't ensure their safety. We're not, is it, are we requiring any of the election workers to wear masks? No, right? No, we can't, we're not going to do that. And so, right, we can't, well, we can up until.
Oh, you're right.
Right, 90 days after legislature closes. Anyway, so, my concern is that, you know, we're encouraging people who, we're not going to try to even verify whether they have their vaccine status in order to make sure that we can effectively realize this vision of voting centers all over our community. So, I. So, I would have been comfortable with the $50 stipend, at least then we would know if some people were vaccinated. So, I'm not, I was sort of unsure I was going to be able to support this item either way. So I guess we'll see how the votes turn out.
Okay.
It must have been on your high school debate team.
No, I can argue both sides on this one, for sure, because I want to make sure that we have voting centers accessible to everybody, regardless of party you should be able to vote, so.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, and this is to approve with the removal of the second and sixth bullets.
Correct.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes.
Supervisor Grealva.
No.
Supervisor Scott.
Yes.
Chair Bronson.
Yes.
And let the record show that Supervisor Heinz has left the meeting.
Okay. Moving on to Item 5, Anti-Bracketeering Revolving Funds. I'm actually okay with this one. I'll move the item.
Second.
Chair Bronson, I guess my issue is the same with the previous one, is that it's not an accessible application. You kind of have to know somebody, and so I do hope that that process will be clarified so, you know, these will be easier to vote for in the future. It has nothing to do with our Bala Williams Performing Company. I think they're great.
Okay, there's motion on the floor to approve. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Oh, did, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That's okay.
Oh, I object, sorry.
Three, one.
Three, one, okay. Moving on to, where are we moving on to?
Six.
Item 6, Public Analysis of Regional Wastewater Reclamation. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing non-motion carries for zero. Moving on to procurement. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I'm kind of curious. We had issues of dollar amounts of the general fund being spent. Here's one for $383,000 to CBIZ Benefits and Insurance Services, also doing business as CBIZ Talent and Compensation Solutions, to provide for a classification and compensation study in a contract amount of $383,000 from the general fund. My question is, don't we have a human resources department that does that? We just had a discussion on the Small Business Commission, that we have all these resources in the county, that all the information that the Small Business Commission needs can be derived from the county, yet we're going out to a consultant at $383,000 a year to provide what I believe should be the HR's responsibility? And we're just going to spend $383,000 to get what HR is supposed to be doing? Isn't that their job?
Ms. Lesher, did you want to respond?
Certainly. Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, I think we began a couple years ago explaining to the Board that our hope was to move forward with what we, with a class comp study. We shared the information with the Board at that time. Unfortunately, the first year we went through this, we were not able to hire that outside consultant. We have the resources within the HR, we have the resources within the HR department to look at some of the individual classifications. When we go in and look at 911 operators, we have the bench to do that. We do not have the bench to do the entire class comp study. What we began to evaluate when we were not able to get a response was how many staff it would take us to hire to be able to provide that response, and found it to be a better use of tax dollars for a limited amount of time to have outside professionals look at that study. We are using consultants, as are every of the jurisdictions within this community, Morana, Oro Valley, et cetera, to look at what the entire study is for all of our class comp, the thousands that we have within the county, rather than doing one or two at a time. And that's the request before you.
Madam Chair, my question, you couldn't get it, get a consultant the last time, or a year ago, you mentioned? And why was that?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, as the Small Business Commission knows, will probably tell you, there was a different response to RFPs throughout the pandemic, the ability for people to travel, to communicate, to look at what we were doing. And we issued the new RFP. We have had a county-wide group evaluate those responses from all of our different departments, and are recommending, now that we move forward with this study, as part of the overall classification and compensation of all of our county employees.
And this would be an independent consultant?
Yes.
Seems like they were following along the Small Business Commission situation that the county's going through as well, so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any objections?
I object.
One objection. Any further objections? Motion carries three to one. Moving on to Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Item 8.
I'll move the item.
Second. Motion and a second.
Chair Bronson.
Yeah.
I did want to bring up that Pima County Affordable Housing Task Force report is in draft form, and they're suggesting the formation of a new housing commission to replace the one now existing, and that report's supposed to be issued before the end of June.
Correct.
And so, if this individual's appointed, we might be declaring a new housing commission. Okay, just thought I'd bring it up.
Okay.
Because they haven't, have they met recently? A housing commission, like, years, right? Okay. Maybe that's why the mission needs to be revamped.
Yeah. All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Are we really done?
Madam Chair, can I make a request of staff? Just looking out at our seating and all of the signs that say, "Seat unavailable for social distancing," I don't know that we've updated this as we need to based on, yeah, so I just, I apologize for not thinking about it until now, but it's clear to me that we haven't updated this. So if I could make that request either of staff or the clerk, I appreciate it. I'm sure everybody would.
All right, thank you. And then, on a closing note, we're going to get to 110. Everybody, stay indoors between 10 and probably sunset at this point. Things are not going to cool off. Hydrate, stay safe, and certainly don't exercise in the middle of the day outside. And on that note, if there's no objections, this meeting stands adjourned.